Thank you very much, Chief. Good evening. My name is Jason Perro and I call to order this Monday, February 22nd, 2021, regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen. Before we begin the meeting, we have some preliminary texts to get through regarding the conduct of an remote meeting. This open meeting is being conducted remotely consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12th, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of the COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of the COVID-19 virus, we've been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings. And as such, the governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law to have all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public bodies are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order which is posted at the top of our agenda for this meeting allows public bodies to meet entirely remotely, so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Insurance, public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature a public comment section. Remind the attendees and participants that this is being conducted by the Zoom conferencing application and being recorded. Anything you say or is visible will be part of the recording. We're advised to consider muting yourself while the ground rules for the meeting. When we turn to the agenda as Chair, I will walk through the items on the agenda and invite the presentation. When the presentation of the agenda item is concluded, I will consult the members of the board for their questions, comments, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Please remember to mute your microphone when you're not speaking. And please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. To make any response, please wait for the Chair to yield the floor to you. And finally, because this is a remote meeting, any vote taken by the board will be conducted by roll call. So I think that concludes most of the information. When we reach a public comment section of tonight's meeting, I'll go over the procedure for that at that time. So with that, let's begin the business of the meeting. The first items we have on listed here are consideration of minutes, but I'm going to ask the board to defer those to a later point in the meeting and go immediately to the first scheduled agenda item. If that's okay with the board? And I'm going to promote to panelist. A couple of names that I recognize.
The one with the KASI. Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I didn't see the full name. Thank you.
I didn't either. Yep.
Yep.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Leslie.
Did you want to go through who was present at the meeting this evening?
I'm sorry. Yes, Leslie. You're correct about that. Before we continue with the meeting. Gentlemen, I brought a few of you in a little bit early, but if you'll wait for just a moment. We typically go through the participants in the meeting to just verify connectivity and voice access here. So if I go through, I'll go through as I call your name, please just unmute and acknowledge by voice. I'm Jason Perro, Chair of the Board of Selectmen. Vice Chair, Tim Kalin.
Present.
Clark Leslie Rattan.
Present.
Member Julian Hirsch.
Present.
And member Scott Rogers.
Present.
Additionally, we have a number of town staff members. We have Town Administrator John Codere.
Present.
We have Assistant Town Administrator Becca Meekins.
Present.
We have Public Works Director Scott Shoprentier.
Present.
Police Chief William Liver.
Present.
Fire Chief and our Zoom Host for the evening, David Parenti.
Present.
And we're also being served by the Technology Assistance of Northborough Cable Access. With that, you can now proceed to the first agenda item. Being past the hour of seven o'clock, Amazon Representatives Discussion Regarding Turning Restrictions and Truck Traffic on Bartlett Street. Gentlemen, yeah, if you could, video and feel free to unmute yourself. And I'll begin. Just if you could first introduce yourselves, just probably name your title and generally speaking, your role with respect to Amazon. Brad?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board, members of the Northborough community. Thank you for your time here this evening. My name is Brad Griggs. I'm a Senior Manager on Amazon's Economic Development Team. I lead our Northeast and Mid-Atlantic Economic Development Government Relations Efforts as it relates to the expansion of Amazon's operations in the region. Joined here this evening by two of my colleagues. I'll let them introduce themselves. Jeff, why don't you introduce yourself next?
Thanks and good evening, everyone. I'm Jeff Cleland. I manage state and local transportation policy and government affairs for amazon.com.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'm Mohammed here. I'm the Site Leader for the OWD five and nine site. So happy to be here and looking forward to kind of working with everyone and resolve any of the challenges out there.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Just to briefly state it. In the Bartlett Street segment, we have some installations going in, which has brought about an increase and expected further increase in truck traffic along that route. Amazon is one of the occupants of one of the facilities and is here tonight to discuss some of the issues and concerns that have been raised by citizens in that area. So John, if you could perhaps provide the context here and the framework essentially for this initial part of the discussion. Let me just say first that the approach this evening is we're first going to have the discussion with the Amazon representatives based on information previously exchanged and known issues and responses to those issues. We'll walk through some questions that have been formulated by town staff. Or I have invited some of the residents of Bartlett Street to submit their questions. And then at the conclusion, if there's any time remaining, this is not an open-ended meeting. This is not a public hearing at this point. So we don't have an open-ended amount of time for this discussion, but if there's a little bit of time at the end, I may go back to one of the Bartlett Street residents for any for follow-up question or clarification that they might ask for. So John, with that, if you could take it?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, gentlemen, thank you for being here this evening. I know you had to rearrange your schedules to to make tonight happen. So we greatly appreciate that. Just for the viewers at home, in preparation for this meeting, we did provide Amazon with a letter and a list of topics and questions that we're hoping to cover this evening. In its broadest stroke, there's a, there's really two general areas of concern or discussion. First of all, let me just start with the uniqueness of this site, which was approved by the Planning Board in 2015. And there was a site plan condition placed on this particular location that says all commercial drivers will be instructed by the facility owner to arrive and exit the facility to and from the east towards the I-95 corridor. Only drivers who have destinations with local businesses will be instructed to arrive and depart from the west along Bartlett Street. So there is a essentially a restriction on the site that as you exit the site that you shouldn't be taking a left and going into the residential neighborhood area at that end of Bartlett. So the two general areas are really fall into one. How is Amazon going to enforce that turning restriction for its drivers? And there's several subcategories within that. And the other is we've had some discussions now for about a month and a half or so with Amazon regarding some potential mitigation that could be performed out on that road. And that is going through a process as well. And we're hoping tonight you can give us an update with regard to that. But in terms of the specific questions that were provided, I just want to, I'm going to go through them here very briefly and then allow the Amazon representatives to approach the questions. However, they would choose to. The first one falls under that category of how you're going to maintain control of the drivers and have them not take a left out of there, out of the driveway. So in coordination with the town, permanent directional signage was installed at the end of the driveway. We thank you for that. We believe that will go a long way to helping resolve or mitigate the issue. However, signage doesn't stop folks from turning. It's the communication and the training of your drivers that ultimately will prove whether or not that is successful. So one of the things that we're hoping you'll talk about tonight is how you intend to train your drivers and to gain compliance, given you have a lot of independent folks that work for you. How are you going to gain compliance with that turning restriction? The second question that we have is we have been experiencing folks getting off the appropriate exit at 495 and coming on the approach and missing the turn into the Amazon facility. And that has resulted in them going down and turning around in the residential neighborhood. Specifically, Sterrebrook Drive has been an issue for us as recently as last night where trucks have gone in there. So after bringing that to your attention, you did put up some temporary signage, which we appreciate. And I understand from the owner of the property, working with Amazon as the tenant, that there is approval for a permanent larger sign lit at the driveway entrance. We're hoping you can give us an update on when that will be installed. It's in place, but it would essentially create a GPS barrier around the residential area where we're hoping to keep the drivers of the trucks out of. We're hoping you can give us an update on the status of that and the effectiveness of that. Number four, we're hoping also tonight you can give us information on what the status is of when the facility will be fully operational. And we understand there's a significant number of employees that will be operating out of that facility in addition to the truck traffic. But one of the things that we're interested in hearing about is we do have our regional high school. There's 1,800 kids plus staff at the end of that street. And when there's time of drop-off, 6:30 a.m. to 7:00 a.m. and when the day ends, you know, 1:30 to 2:00 p.m., that ended that the Bartlett is just very busy and jammed. And we are interested in knowing what you have or what you intend to put in place in terms of your shifts and your operations to minimize or avoid traffic during those peak periods where the high school is in operation. Number five, and by the way, this is a half a dozen questions. So number five is that at a recent meeting with the Central Mass Regional Planning Commission in the Planning Board, they had mentioned that Amazon has agreed to do what is known as a post occupancy monitoring study, which essentially is, you know, traffic study was done in preparation of approval of this, of this development. And then this would be a essentially a review of the site and the traffic in the truck traffic, where it's coming from, where it's going afterwards to see if there's a gap and whether or not we need to revisit anything. So my understanding is that Amazon has performed similar traffic studies at other facilities. And we're hoping that you would be willing to commit to performing one here once you're fully operational. And then last but not least, again, that second big bucket of questions or concerns is the discussion on the mitigation. We've had some pretty lengthy discussions regarding, you know, bike lanes, crosswalks, pedestrian-activated, flashing beacons, school zones down in that area. The staff submitted a detailed memo to Amazon. As I said, about a month and a half or so ago. And we've been kind of in those discussions and we're hoping you can let us know tonight where those potential mitigation requests are. So I know for folks at home, that might be a lot to follow, but again, these questions were provided to you in writing in advance in the meeting to provide some structure to what it is that we are hoping to get out of this discussion this evening. So certainly I'm not sure how you'd like to proceed, Brad, if you just want to go question by question, or if you would want to just kind of if you have a presentation that sort of hits upon these things as you go. So I'm going to leave it through the Chair up to you.
Yep. Brad, please proceed in whatever manner you feel is most effective.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, John. From that same point, I think we'll, we'll most likely go question by question, given that there was a lot to cover there. We'll sort of address them in order. The first being the signage and the installation of that signage as it relates to both inbound and outbound traffic from our site. I think it'd be first helpful to give context around the type of operations. We have a a number of different facility types throughout the Commonwealth. And the facility that we're operating in Northborough is part of our middle mile network. It is a transition point from the first location where our inventory is kept and where products are ordered from. That's where they're packaged, labeled and set out on our logistics network. They're typically placed onto a line haul truck and then they hit head out in the direction of our customers' addresses. There is oftentimes a middle point to help them transition to a closer location, closer route as it heads on its way to your home. And that's what the site there in Northborough is. So it is a transition point or sortation center that operates as our middle mile aspect of operations. So it is receiving inbound, you know, packages bound together to then be more regionally distributed to get closer to our customers at that point. So this is unlike some of the other facilities in the area like our last mile facilities that may have multiple different vehicle types coming in and out throughout the day. This is essentially a trucks-in, trucks-out style facility with our Amazon associates coming there to operate and help transition the product through the site. So it is trucks and personal vehicles, but there are no delivery vans as part of this operation. So this is purely a transition point for our product to help get from our first mile or fulfillment center locations to get closer and more regionally bound through this sortation center in the area. So I think from a, from a operational standpoint, some of the aspects of how our operations have received coverage throughout the Commonwealth has been really more targeted on our last mile operations and our van deliveries as it relates to operations and driver behavior. So I just wanted to make that point at the start for, for the folks there in Northborough to kind of understand the differences in our types of operations. As far as the signage and what we've been able to install, as well as how we have been training the third-party independent contractors that drive our trucks or drive the trucks, I should say, I want to turn it over to Mohammed there at the, the site to talk about, one, when the signage was put up, where the signage is, how it is directing the trucks both inbound and outbound out of the site at the location. And then also about some of the things we're doing with our, with the truck drivers as it relates to them heading out of the site.
Thanks, Brad. So a couple of things. So the temporary signage that I had shared with John, I think that was at about two to three weeks ago, and that has been helping so far with the visibility of where exactly the site is so that the drivers do not miss the turn. Then there were some additional signs that were kind of installed as the drivers are leaving the buildings. So as they get onto the Bartlett Street, there is a sign out there that tells them to make a right. Again, reminding the drivers of where to exactly go. And number three, the, there have been pamphlets that we have shared from our team members as the drivers are checking out, we are providing them the direction on how to exit as they leave the building. So three initiatives going on as far as directionals are concerned. We are also getting like how you have mentioned about a sign similar to the FedEx sign, more lighted up and more permanent solution. It should be installed by April. Talking to our general contractor, that's the timeline we have so far.
Thanks.
All right.
So, John, I think that hopefully addresses at least the first and I believe potentially second question. If you could then reiterate what the, the third question that you'd like us to cover?
So the third question was pertaining to the geo-fencing. This is the GPS software that essentially would prevent drivers or make them aware of areas or truck routes that they should not be taking. And I know that we've had some mixed experience with that so far, and we're not really clear on how how universally it's been implemented and how that works and how successful you've been with it.
Sure. And Mr. Chair, I'd like to bring in my colleague Jeff Cleveland at this point to be able to discuss how our GPS process works as it relates to our third-party independent contractors that drive the trucks.
Yes, please, please proceed, Jeff.
All right. Thank you, Chair. So Amazon has an app, a GPS app called Relay for our middle mile trucks. And anyone that hauls an Amazon trailer, it could be an independent owner-operator or a small fleet has access to these. Unfortunately, following 2006 rulings through Federal Motor Carrier, they mandated something called an electronic logging device in all Class 8 trucks. Not unfortunately, it's a good thing for safety and that. But most independent operator truck drivers choose to use this mandatory software because that's what tracks their hours of service, which they have to report to DOTs and in that, you know, throughout the year. So they don't, they're not, it's not mandatory to use this relay app. So while we have geo-fenced certain routes that they can't take, some of the drivers are opting not to use the Amazon software because they have a GPS. Instead of running two GPS units in their truck, they're going to run the one that tracks their hours of service and their routes. So you know, some of the other mitigation efforts of actually like having signage or a piece of paper or a bill of lading or something like that to direct them will supplement some of the tech fixes because some of the drivers will use Relay, but they're not mandated to use it.
Okay, on that topic, because I think that is going to be a concern for the residents. The, the effectiveness of a geo-fencing application to shield that section of Bartlett from traffic is only as effective as the number of drivers who are actually referring to it. So do you have anything from your experience to say what percentage of drivers tend to use it in, in other operations?
We could, we could trace trailers to see who would be going off the route. But I think, you know, given that some of these trucks are probably showing up without an Amazon trailer or leaving without an Amazon trailer to go pick up from another company or something like that, that makes it a little bit more difficult because we can't track an independent contractor's vehicle beyond what's, you know, hauling our actual physical trailer. I can look into the team and get back to you to see though, if we have any data on, on that, on who would be going off route there. I think unfortunately, the, the electronic logging device is not picking up that taking a left is illegal because outside of the site plan, they're legally allowed to drive there from my understanding. So there, the, the geo-fencing on our app is, it only goes so far, but they're not going to have that on the the larger platform that they're using for their logging devices.
Okay. I'd just like to have people have a realistic expectation how effective that technology is going to be in addressing our particular situation. Yeah, if I could, Tim Kalin? Question?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And in regards to the, the drivers in the, in the geo-fencing, is there any repercussions for the drivers that don't use the relay app and then don't follow the signage? For example, trucks going down and turning around on Sterrebrook, if they're reported back to Amazon, are there any repercussions for the driver?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I don't know repercussion-wise unless they're breaking the law, getting a ticket or, you know, having an incident or something like that. We wouldn't necessarily know that they're turning around in those neighborhoods unless it's brought to our attention by, you know, the board or citizens or something like that. So I'd have to get back to you on that. I'm not 100%.
Thank you.
And John?
If I may, so we appreciate the, the signage and the efforts, but at the end of the day, it's up to Amazon to keep the drivers on the correct route. And I think they're just from the residents and from the board's concern, and certainly as the office that winds up getting the complaints that I would like a little bit stronger commitment from you and understanding of these drivers aren't following the site plan condition. What are you going to do? How are we going to enforce this? Because I can tell you right now, and if we, if we open this up to a different format, we can sit and listen for three hours of residents that are very upset that drivers are taking a left and they're turning around and they're taking routes that they're not supposed to. So we appreciate, and I do genuinely mean that. I appreciate everything that's been done. We're not quite there in terms of effectiveness. How are we going to get there with the effectiveness to stop this problem from occurring? Unlike, as you said, they may, they can legally take that turn, but the site plan restriction in a condition is on Amazon, not on the drivers. So you guys are responsible for those drivers. We really need to know how you're going to make this happen.
Understood. And we'll, as Jeff indicated, we'll take that back and work on trying to get some better data to be able to provide to the town on the number of trucks utilizing it and potential solutions there.
Okay. That takes us through question number three.
So question, yeah, so question number four has to do with the high school and the operations and the hours of the high school. And if you could take a minute, Brad, you started to talk a little bit about the type of facility and what it does and doesn't do. But in terms of your, can you speak in terms of your shifts and when most trucks and staff are coming and going and how that overlays with our high school at the other end of the road and what considerations have been made to try to minimize that overlap of the busy times?
Understood. And so from that, I think I get into it first where we're at as far as the operations of the site. We are very close to this operating at full potential. You know, our sites tend to have a built-in accordion aspect to them where during the peak season of the holiday period, they're designed to be able to accommodate additional space, but during the bulk of the year, they operate at a pretty steady state and And this site is very close at roughly about 80% of its steady state capacity is where we're at as far as headcount and operations going through. So in the not-too-disseminated future, this site will be at its steady state norm. From an operational standpoint, as I mentioned, the locations that have had issues around, you know, the traffic as it relates to vans or the dispersment of vans and particular bulk times, those are our delivery stations. That is not what this site is about. That's not how this site operates. It's going to have associates there in, in sort of support functions, taking and, and transferring the product between the arriving trucks and the departing trucks throughout the day with traffic that is, is more or less steady. Now, in those two peak periods, I think we can look into analyzing it. We had had discussions around the, the morning. I think we can get better information as it relates to targeting the two half hours, John, that you specifically mentioned. But my understanding is, and I have to confirm this with Mohammed, we'll look into whether or not there are shift change specifically at 6:30 to seven or shift changes, as you said, between 1:30 and two. I don't believe we have shift changes there. I just want to confirm that, that we do not have our employee shift changes during those times. The rest of the day is, is the trucks coming in and out, but those are periods of time where we can look into how it relates to the rest of the day. But I again, don't believe those are peak periods either for the trucks coming in and out of the site. So I, I think the concerns that many communities have voiced as it relates to dispersment times from our facilities have been more related to van traffic related to delivery stations that have large bulk dispersments of vehicles from the site for delivery stations where, you know, 30, 40, 60 vans maybe leaving a site all in, in more or less a very short period of time. And then there'll be a lull and then there'll be another wave at a subsequent time for our delivery stations. That's how those sites operate. This sortation center and our associates coming in and out of it is more dispersed throughout the day, not during a targeted window like the delivery stations are in the morning and the evening.
So through the chair, if I may, so just can you, exactly how many, roughly, how many employees are in on this site between 3:30 and 3:50?
I don't have that directly in front of me. Mohammed, do you know typically what we would have on a day-to-day basis? You said between 3:30 and 3:50 onsite?
Do you have an onsite?
John, is that what you're asking?
Yeah. How many employees will be operating out of this, out of this location, basically?
So in the entire day or in just in a specific time?
Both. How many employees are associated with that and how many? I guess we're trying to get a sense of how many are going to be there at any one time. I think there's a concern, we've seen the number of 1,300 or 1,400 employees and this thought of that that many employees are coming and going at any given time.
No, and I, I think from that standpoint, correct. A lot of the folks in this facility are going to be part-time, working 20 hours, 25 hours a week on average. That's where you get to 1,300 total people working at this site. So this facility operates 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And so to get coverage in the unique nature of how these sortation shifts work, we have a, a number of sort of smaller segmented shift times that Mohammed can get into, but it allows for a flexible work experience to be able to come on, maybe work four or a six-hour shift. So there's not going to be any point where that total number is in the building at any given time.
So maybe, maybe then Mohammed, you can provide us some information about, so how many, what are these shifts? How, how is this shift work? How many people are there roughly? When are they coming and going? How often the shifts? Again, these are questions that we're receiving from residents that would like a little bit more understanding of the operation.
All right. Yeah, I can provide you some insight. So one of the buildings is OWD9, kind of operates four shifts. Each shift is about four hours long, starts at 10:00 AM in the morning and the last one ends at 6:30 in the morning. And the site has relatively low headcount, maximum 15 people coming in, in a shift for one of those buildings. So about maximum 15 coming in a shift. And then the other building, which is OWD5, has similar sort structure, about four hour shifts. But they start at about 8:45 in the morning and they, the last wave is, or the last shift is ending at, let me quickly see, it's ending at five in the morning. Now this, again, the shifts are about 100 people, 100 to 120 people per shift, except for the last one, which is about 15 to 20 people, which is overnight, overnight shift. So at any given time between the two buildings, at a max, we will be around 200 people.
Okay. So coming and going from the site and a shift change at any one time would be between 100 and 200 people?
And they don't leave all the sites? And they don't leave all at the same time. We have a staggered shift approach, so they leave at 15-minute increments.
Okay. All right.
And, and again, the, the concern part or great part is the, the timing of those shift transitions in the traffic flow relative to the high volume traffic times of the high school in the morning and in the afternoon. So trying to minimize essentially the, the conflict of those two traffic flows on the street.
Okay. So maybe the, it's a perfect transition into question number five, which is the, if Amazon would be willing to conduct a post occupancy monitoring study so that we know, we would actually know where the trucks are coming from, the amount of traffic coming and going from the site, what time that would be occurring. So that we can get a, basically a, a bit of a, an analysis on what's, what's happening on that site and what, if anything, might be appropriate for modifications on the part of the town or potentially discussions with Amazon to, to maybe reduce or mitigate some of the impacts on the, on that neighborhood. So again, it's my understanding that you've done similar studies in other facilities. And so we hope you would consider doing that, or we would request that you would do that here. And I'm not sure what that process is, Brad.
Yeah, we'll, we'll work with you on getting through that process and, and working through the process, working through our due diligence to make sure that we can, you know, get that instituted and whatever that, that format our study would take hold.
Right. So that's something Amazon is open to, to performing. Excellent. That's, we appreciate hearing that. And then the last sort of big bucket discussion was with regard to mitigation and specifically pedestrian, pedestrian safety down on the far end of Bartlett near the high school. And along Bartlett, we, there's, it's a roadway that's used by bikers, some walkers. But, but we discussed again, some crosswalks, flashing beacons, potential school zone of some kind around the high school entrance. And, and, and flashing beacons for specifically for crosswalk pedestrian safety. So again, we gave you a detailed memo with the staff's thoughts on what would be appropriate out there and helpful. And I don't know if you can give us an update on where that request is in terms of Amazon's internal process.
So John, you know, we've been working with you and the, the, the town on this process. It's in a company our size, unfortunately, it takes a bit of time to get approvals through. We are working through that process and are reviewing it internally to discuss kind of the, the mitigation efforts that have been put forth by the town. We've been working on that for some time as we've worked through this engagement process in advance of this meeting. At this point, I unfortunately do not have an update on, on kind of exactly where in our process as it works its way through consideration and review. But as soon as we have an update from our, you know, from our standpoint, we'll be able to, to get back from them. You know, we realized, we got the letter from you, I think in mid-January, we started our internal process shortly thereafter. It's just, you know, there, there's been, that, that time of year, there tends to be some change in, in internal, you know, org structure. So we'll be back to the town as soon as we can update that.
Would it, would it be, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but would it be fair to say that it's, what has been requested is within the norm of what you've seen done in other communities?
I think, you know, we've had these sort of, it, it, it's within the norm of having these sort of discussions. I could say that. I, I think to date, we've, you know, continued to try and work through the due diligence. As I said, there, there's just been changes internally in, in our org structures and just trying to organizational structures. And so trying to get through the approvals has just taken a little bit longer than we anticipated. But I, I don't believe anything is outside of what we've considered on other projects.
Okay. If I, if I may through the chair, I mean, those were our, the questions, at least the general questions that we had asked. But if I may through the chair, as the, as the individual that's on the receiving end of the upset residents, again, as I said, I, we greatly appreciate the work that's been done to date and the, the signage and the efforts that are out there and the ongoing discussions on mitigation. We appreciate all those things. At the end of the day, it's up to Amazon to make sure that they're, that your driver is independent or not, are following the conditions that are placed on your site. And as the receiving end of those complaints, we'll just say that those efforts to date have not been sufficient in, in managing that site. And so while I appreciate the efforts, they have fallen short and we continue to communicate. And we also realize, and we've communicated this to the residents, that look, the site is opening, there's a learning curve. And, and we, and we understand that. But as we move forward, things need to be improving and the, the drivers taking the inappropriate routes needs to diminish in that. And I guess to that, to that end and that goal, how do you propose that we, we get there? And we continue to get complaints, they're independent drivers. How are you? Like if we open this up to the residents, this is where you guys would be getting hammered. So I know I'm going to get, I'm going to get the comments that I'm too, going too easy on you. So that's the issue. That's the bottom line is you've got to handle these drivers. They need to stay out of the residential neighborhoods. We're getting the complaints and it's got to be more than we've told them. And they choose to use the GPS that they like. And if they don't do it, you know, let us know. I mean, we'll let you know, but we need to know how this is gonna, how this is really going to be resolved, I guess, and the commitment from Amazon to make sure that this ends and that it diminishes. The one positive thing I did here tonight though, is, you know, that we're, if we're at 80%, I think there was an anticipation by the residents in, in the community that this thing was all of a sudden going to open 100% and things were going to change radically overnight. So it does sound like it is going to continue to draw more traffic. You are bringing drivers in that aren't familiar with the area. That's where they're getting into trouble. But how are we going to, how, how, how are you going to resolve this? And what, what do you want from us and the residents in terms of letting you know when it's not working and how are you going to specifically address it, I guess, is the bottom line?
Sure. I appreciate that. From that standpoint, I think it's a couple of different things. First, you, you mentioned one of, of the factors is that this site did just open. We believe as drivers tend to take consistent routes from the facility, even if they are independent contractors, they get more familiar with where the site's located. As facilities come online more often, we tend to see the drivers missing sites or getting lost and not finding a location to diminish. So I think that's one aspect, but additionally, we want to be here. We're, we want to be good corporate citizens, whether it's, it's myself or Jeff or Mohammed. We want to have a clear line of discussion with you, with the chair, with the members of the board and with the, the town of Northboro. I mean, these are our customers that are in your community and that, that is incredibly important for us to make sure that we are being responsive to you and to our customers there and to your constituents as a whole. As those issues should they arise in the future, we are going to continue to work and be part of the process to solve them. You know, we want to partner with you, John, with the, the chair, with the board on having direct lines of communications that if you are hearing issues from your constituents, that that is the process. That if they're bringing you issues, we are going to be there and be responsive and work collectively to find a solution and be there, you know, time and time again for meetings just like this, if need be, to find the solutions that need, that need to happen. And so we want an open dialogue. We want to be good corporate citizens and we want to make sure that we're addressing the issues that are there should they leave that between the processes that have been put in place, between the signage. A app to try and, you know, get more drivers to utilize it, provide that geo fencing for the utilization of the app. That will also help drive down potential incidences. And then from there, we can work on, you know, mitigation as per.
Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Last, last Monday, we, we got an email from a resident with some pictures of the signs that are at the end of the driveway, leaving the, the Amazon facility. And I am, I've known a professional truck driver who owns his own business, owns a trucking company. He's driven 18-wheelers, you know, all over every corner of this great country. So I just asked him about the, the signs and his feedback was the signs are better than, than most of the, the facilities that he makes deliveries to over, you know, across the country. He's a professional driver, so he knows what to look for when he's leaving the facility. Directions, specifically the colors on the, the highway signs. So he knows when he sees the, the blue and, and red signs, that those are good points and to directions on where to get the major highways in the area. So he had good feedback on that. He also told me that professional drivers will pay attention to the signs because they don't want to go where they're not supposed to. They're driving 53-foot trailers. But with, with that being said, I am concerned that there aren't repercussions for drivers going, taking the wrong way. Like the trucks just can't go on St. Rock Lane. They can't be on that road. They like, I don't know how else it can be stressed that the, the trucks can't be on that road. And without repercussions, like I know this person, how he gets his, his loads. He gets them from a broker and the broker puts the load out for, for bid. The drivers respond, they get the loads, they get awarded the roads. Now I would think if there are drivers that make deliveries at Amazon that don't follow the rules and regulations or following the signs that are leaving the facility, that you let your broker know that you can't hire those drivers anymore. That would solve the problem. If the drivers know that they go the wrong way, they're going to lose Amazon as a customer for their own business. I think that will incentivize them to follow the, the, the signage and stay out of our, our residential neighborhoods. But without repercussions, there's like, we're going to have to dedicate resources to policing your drivers, which is just going to lead things, you know, where we don't want them to go.
Yeah. And so I can answer that a little bit in that the geo fencing is, is part of the solution in that whether or not they use Relay, we can track where these trailers are going. I think it's been brought to my attention and, and some of the other members in our team. And Mohammed had mentioned earlier, our Tom team, and that's who tracks the trailers relatively recently. So we don't really have a large data set of trucks that have gone out there because we weren't tracking it for, you know, previously because there was nothing that would flag that they're not allowed on those roads. So what I'm, what I'm saying I will do is, is go back to that team to track these trailers for that response, for drivers that are maybe multiple times breaking this. Cause I, I'm actually a former truck driver as well. I used to drive 18-wheelers across country. It's a stressful situation when you get to a road and you can't turn around on it. It's not fun. They don't want to go there. And so we, we want to fix this behavior at the origin, coming to the site and leaving the site as well. And so right now, when we can, when we can do this geo fencing, it's not just for the Relay app for GPS, but it's actually tracking the trailers and where they go. And so I will, I will follow up with that team to, to get as much data as we can on it and follow up with drivers or small fleets or whoever we're working with.
Do you have any idea on a timeframe on how long that will take you to get back to us with that information?
I, I don't. Routs in the past as well, so we can, we can. Routes uh in the past as well, so we can, we can kind of try to gather a data set um within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, great, thank you.
Uh, John, you'd like to?
Uh, a suggestion that has been made uh in conversations with the uh police department is uh. Would Amazon be willing to put a video at the end of your driveway so that you can have a record of your trucks? Specifically, the ones that are violating the turning restriction, so you can follow up appropriately. One of the issues that we keep hearing from the residents is why is it up to them to report a truck turning around on Sturbrook Drive or a truck? Uh, in the residential neighborhood where it's not supposed to be, obviously, the police will uh are monitoring that, but. It's really, the the bottom line is with with this condition on the site, it's really not the drivers, it's Amazon that's responsible. And the best way for you, if you really wanna track your drivers, would be to monitor the exit of your facility. And then you can know in real time and on a daily basis, who is violating a turning restriction and take appropriate action to Tim's point that to have repercussions. Is that something that you'd be willing to do?
I'm not sure what we have camera wise on the site yet, um, you know, I'm I'm not sure if there's any security cameras out there or not, uh Mohammed, I don't know if you've seen this before, Brad.
Uh, I have not, and John, this would be something we'd have to take back into consideration um with our team and and get back to you on.
Uh, we'd appreciate that because I think that would really solve the problem, particularly if drivers know that they're being, if they're being told they're being videotaped as they leave. And uh and as they go, if they take the wrong turn, that there will be repercussions. That's you policing your driveway, which is really where we need to get to, uh you need to be policing that, and I I think you realize that. And uh to the extent that you can be clear on that to the drivers, I think that'd be helpful, and again, whether or not you have video cameras, video cameras are cheap. They're very, very inexpensive and the I'll tell you right now, the residents have trail cameras all over the place, so they're telling us where your truck drivers are, so. If they know where they are, you should be able to know where they are, that I think that would go a long way to you being able to police your. Your facility as they exit and then Mohammed as the site manager can be reviewing that footage on a daily basis and know who's not complying. Um, and then that takes all of it, takes the onus off the residents and off the police department to be monitoring. Your site, so that's something we'd really like you to take a look at if you could.
Understood.
Uh, Leslie Rutan.
Yeah, hi, good evening, uh, thank you to Brad, Jeff and Mohammed for being here, I do wanna thank you very much for agreeing to come and speak with us this evening. And as the, you know, I wanna say too that residents are a valued member of our community, but so are you. And we're happy that you're here, um, and I know it's a huge organization and things take time. So uh I wanna be, uh, I think people need to be very understanding of that and I personally feel that a lot of progress has been made. And in terms of, you know, running things up the flagpole, I know it can take time in a in an organization the size of yours, so I do feel that we all need to be a little bit more patient. And we all need to realize that maybe things may take a month or two, maybe an update in a month is is uh sufficient. The question, getting back to what John was saying, um, I take it that there are some. Trucks that have the right to turn left in order to proceed with their business. Is that correct? And that if we monitor them, then there has to be some sort of double checking to see if they are supposed to have done that or not? Are there, is there literally no one that is supposed to be taking a left?
Based on the nature of the of the facility as described to us, they should be taking a right and going the proper routes.
Okay, so.
They're not, none of those trucks are making home deliveries, in which case they shouldn't be taking a left.
Okay. So there's no instance where a left is allowed, period, then, okay.
Not according to the condition that was um part of the approval of.
Yeah, if I'm if I'm wrong on that, somebody should correct me.
Okay, uh, getting back to the geo fencing thing, which I think is the biggest thing that stuck out in my mind, um, I know this sounds like there's a preferred app. Uh, that the truckers like to use, um, is there any way to um incorporate the hour, the tracking of hours into? What they like to use, I'm not a software engineer, but. Um, I don't know if there's a way to to make it easier for them to use the one they want and that serves our purposes in terms of the geo fencing.
Right now, we haven't been able to find one, um, you know, you can, in some instances, there's API codes is how you would kind of link two technology systems together. Um, it's this technology for the logging devices that's federally mandated is kind of in its infancy and there's only a few companies out there that run these. Um, so at this point, there isn't um a a way to do that.
Okay, okay. I can see that there must be, I'm sure there's a hesitation on their part, um, if they have a nice way of being able to comprehensively do everything they want in one app. Track their hours and so forth, I yeah, I can understand that, okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, Julian or Scott, any questions at this time?
I just have one question, Scott, did you wanna go?
Go ahead, Julian.
Okay, um, so if the if the flexible rotating start and finish times on the shifts. Doesn't seem to work out with the um hours of the high school and how i- is that? Is that an easy thing to fix at your end or how how would we work that out?
So from my understanding, I don't believe there are currently shift changes of our employees during those times.
At all.
Mohammed, correct?
So. One of our, at one of the buildings, one of the shift ends at five in the morning, which is the only shift ending at that time. And then at the other building, it is ending at uh six thirty in the morning, which is about fifteen people max in both buildings exiting.
Okay.
So it should not create a whole lot of traffic.
So at the moment, the expectation is that any shift transitions taking place during those school transit times is relatively low. And unlikely to impact the overall traffic.
Correct.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Julian. Uh, Scott Rogers, any questions at this time?
Uh, just kind of uh one thing in in addition to the other other comments is I'm I'm seeing it's gonna be very important that we have. An established line of communications with Mohammed and the team, you know, operating at the site and that we just have. Um, a method to um continue to discuss and continue to improve the situation and I think Mohammed, it's gonna be, you know. A really tight working relationship with you and your team there on site.
So from that, Scott, I'll just step in with how our operations work, uh, we we wanna make sure that the communication. Kind of goes through our economic development and public policy team because. Mohammed's there now, but there tends to be, you know, we have a very large and growing network of facilities. Uh, our team is centrally based, we're able to work through getting to points of contact at the facility. We have open lines of dialogue with with John, with the chair, with the town to make sure that there's clear ongoing dialogue. And so we wanna make sure that that dialogue continues and whether it's Mohammed or a future site leader, we will be able to bring the facility to the conversation. But that we wanna make sure that there is not an expectation that folks should. You know, this is an industrial site, should be going to the facility, trying to speak with Mohammed, we wanna make clear that. The the line of communication is from the town to our team and to be able to help. Manage that process because, you know, Mohammed's primary focus is being able to run a safe facility to meet our customers' needs. And so part of our our dialogue and process that we've communicated with John and to the chair and to you here at the board is we wanna be. Responsive and the best way to do that is to to contact our team and then we will be able to bring in the folks there at the facility in real time.
Yes, so just to clarify, by by we, I meant, you know.
Understood, yeah, no, no, understood.
Have appropriate, you know, town staff and but in in terms of the town having. A singular, a single point of contact, that communication, that's gotta be. Just a a very tight communication chain and and open and 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 direct, I guess that's what I, that's really the point I was trying to make. It might not individually be Mohammed, but whoever that point of contact is for Amazon. We've gotta be able to, you know, uh, maintain that level of communications, that's what I'm trying to.
Absolutely, and we appreciate that and and we will main maintain that in the future.
Uh, thank you, uh, we do have a few other questions that were submitted by residents that I don't think have been touched upon, if we could just run through those briefly and you can. Give a quick response to the extent you're able to. Um, and I'm just using my judgment here as I go down through these to s- to to determine which ones have probably been answered and which ones have not. Uh. There's a question, is there an area for truck drivers to rest or sleep on your property so they do not do so in inappropriate or dangerous locations? I think we've had some concerns about trucks standing on Bartlett Street overnight or or some or circumstances such as that. Is there any uh overnight provision or resting provision that you provide for onsite for any of these trucks?
Well, Mohammed, do you, I don't think we have any spots on, the way that the the line haul usually works is that, you know, truck can drive eleven hours out of the day. Um, and they're not driving generally eleven hours to get to our site, so they should be able to carry on from there. Um, trucks shouldn't be stopping there, there should be legal truck stops along, you know, ninety-five corridor and that. Where they can take the rest or truck stops, you know, pilot TA, those types of things, but um usually at our facilities, there's so many moving parts with trailers and trucks. That there's just not extra space for for parking and it's just really not the way our operations are set up. Um, for the, you know, uh, uh, an eleven hour shift to end at one of the sites.
Okay, uh, no expectation to provide that onsite, but also no expectation that there's any driver in need of that capability onsite. Uh. We talked about the.
Mister Chairman, if I may, just for a point of clarification or information, just uh, the Board of Selectment at a previous. Uh, meeting has voted to uh designate all of Bartlett Street, no parking, so any. Truck that pulls over on the side to idle or to or to to stay or rest will be ticketed. Uh, so uh you should convey that to your drivers as well, that that that's not going to be um uh tolerated down in that uh on Bartlett Street in that neighborhood.
Well, we'll, we will pass that down, um, the truckers should, they should know that to begin with, but we will definitely pass that down.
Hey, John, can you forward that communication to myself, that way I can uh share with the team out here?
Yeah, uh, we haven't been able to post it yet because of the snow, so it's physically, uh, it's been voted, no parking. Uh, but the signs will go up as soon as the weather permits, so, but yeah, I'm happy to send that to you, Mohammed.
Thank you.
Uh, another question, will this facility be using drone technology to deliver packages at any point in the foreseeable future? Is it going to convert essentially to local delivery?
You're on you, Brad. Sorry, I, it it happens once every couple of weeks and so I got nailed tonight, hopefully, I I reset my my counter now, um. No, thi- this is going to operate as a middle mile site, there's no expectation for this site to convert to local delivery at this time. Or in the foreseeable future.
By any means, either vans or drones or or anything of that nature.
Correct.
Okay. Uh, we talked about the monitoring study, um. We are discussing issues regarding safety sidewalks, bike lanes. Um. There's a question here, would Amazon contribute to other town improvements or beautification projects in Northborough?
So I think, you know, Mister Chair, we've worked through our process of what was required and uh of us in order to operate the facility. I think we can work with the town on potential efforts, um, but as part of our approvals process, that was, you know, obviously a consideration for the town at that time. That we are entitled and permitted to operate the facility in the manner with which, you know, the the town has approved. And so, you know, that that that's the level with which we've um potentially considered undertaking any additional mitigation efforts.
Okay, thank you. Uh, there's a question, and this pertains in part to the notion of uh. The impact of operation, would Amazon contribute funding for upkeep of paving Bartlett Street? And improving the quality of Cedar Hill Road at Marlboro, which most drivers use to get to four ninety-five, Route four ninety-five.
Uh, again, I think it would get back to, you know, we 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 went through the permitting and entitlements process with the town. And any requisite potential improvements, I I believe would have been considered at that time.
Okay, thank you. And uh, there's a question, is there a community affairs representative for Amazon? And so what is the best way to reach this person, I believe the prior discussion we had a few minutes ago is essentially to say that. The channel of communication is between um the town, the municipality and Amazon, any concerns or questions should be fed uh um. To town staff, uh, and they provide the point of contact or means of communication to convey those to concerns to Amazon, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, very good.
If I if I may, Father, Mister Chairman, if I may follow up on that, so as the point of contact, the the, I have the pleasure, uh, myself and the police chief. When we get complaints or concerns, like there are trucks turning around on Sturbrook Drive or trucks taking the route they're not supposed to, I forward those to Mohammed. Um, but then I I guess the frustration uh from the residents in and my office as well is. That the the it keeps happening and the complaints go, uh, we don't really get a clear feedback as to what has been uh. What the outcome is, whether or not the dri- it's been addressed with the driver, um, we don't ever get any feedback afterwards, so sometimes. It feels like we're continuing to provide the information and the complaints, but they get the problem continues. And we don't get any real direct feedback, so the perception from the residents is nothing's happening. Uh, nobody's taking it seriously and the problem's not being resolved, so how do you suggest we um eliminate that issue or that perception?
So I think, John, you know, we've shown tonight that we've taken a number of steps to try and address the issues around the site and work towards a solution here. As I mentioned earlier, I think the point of contact needs to be myself and our public policy team, Mohammed is tasked with, you know, really running the site and and running our operations there. We are tasked with being, you know, the group that that works together with the community, so I think that's a first step is to work with myself and our public policy organization. But then we're gonna make sure that Mohammed's kept in the loop there and we're gonna make sure that we are being responsive as it relates to your communications.
Okay.
Um, and so I think, you know, we have worked to try and mitigate and there have been efforts and things undertaken to address the issues that you and your team have been working with us on. For several weeks now.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that.
Very good, uh, any other questions from the board? Uh, Julian.
Yeah, so do you think that our local restaurants and gas stations should expect um to be a little busier with your employees or? Do they, are they dispersed so so far, like like where where would one of these trucks go, do they go to the last mile? They go to a last mile facility and like, is there, where are those?
Great, oh, go ahead, Jeff.
Oh, I was gonna, there there's kind of a, there's a couple of things here because of the two sites, you know, one of the sites is going to be strictly uh Amazon trucks that are going to Amazon last mile facilities. Um, last mile delivery stations from our our network and the other site is is uh also UPS and US Postal Service trucks. Um, but like a local gas station shouldn't expect to see eighteen wheelers pull in to refuel because they just don't have that. Um, they don't have the ability to 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 handle vehicles like that, they're generally going to like a truck stop. But uh, you know, for for local employees that are shifting in and out, I mean, sure, yes, they could use the the local facilities, but again, as Brad said earlier. This not being a last mile delivery station where vans would fill up on gasoline locally, um, it's not that, the in in the local stations probably wouldn't see the trucks nor maybe would they want to depending on the size of the parking lot.
So simply put, no, no expectation of a significant increase in uh uh local economic uh uh. Expansion, if you will, uh arising from, uh, uh, apart from what the the onsite employees might do themselves in the course of transiting. Uh, stopping eat somewhere, filling up on gas, but in terms of the uh through drivers, essentially, uh, that's the vehicles and and the nature of their. Schedule probably doesn't suggest that they would be uh patrons of our local establishments. Very good. Um, at this point, uh, I'd like to ask for an opportunity to allow one of our, um. I had invited uh these questions uh to be submitted uh by the residents of Bartlett Street and I told them I would give them. A brief opportunity uh to follow up with any additional questions, um, and I do see one one person uh uh that. I recognize as being a frequent uh inquirer about the nature of the operation, so I think that's the person I'm going to go to. Well, now they've bailed, um. And now I think he's back, I'm going to ask him first, uh. And I want to, I want to just tell everybody right off the bat, I see numbers of hands going up, this isn't a public hearing. And our approach for tonight is just simply. And our approach for tonight is just simply to refer to the neighbors in the immediate area and give a representative from that area a chance to provide a few follow-up questions. So I'm going to be taking questions from one person. And John and Kristen Wickstead, you two have to figure out which one of you it's going to be. Because I see both of your hands up. Thank you, it looks like it's going to be Kristen. Okay, Kristen, I'm going to bring you in. Hello, Kristen. And if I may, if I may to start, Kristen, this is an opportunity to answer, or I'm sorry, ask any additional follow-up questions. It's not a public hearing, other people are not going to have the opportunity to comment. I would like to just confine it to question and answer, if we could do that, please.
Right, right, no.
Thank you. Yeah.
Um, let's hope the dog doesn't start parking.
And, okay. I'd say we probably have no more than 10 minutes.
No problem.
So, okay.
So I, I would like the gentleman, oh my goodness, hold on. Peter, quiet, sorry. Teenage son playing video games in the background. Um, I would like the gentleman from Amazon to know that it's not just that the trucks are, well, I'll just tell you where I live. I live at the corner of Sturrock Lane and Bartlett Street, okay?
Yes, I'm sorry, Kristen, could you just name an address, please, first?
To Sturrock Lane.
Yep, thank you.
So right at the corner.
And as I said, this is question and answer. It's not context setting, it's not past history. If you have questions, please direct the questions to us.
Right, right, so what I'm trying to say is, the trucks don't just go the wrong way, they also go the wrong way 50 miles an hour. That's really too fast. So it's not just annoying, it's a safety issue, and we're very concerned, okay? So that's just the first important thing. Another important thing, John had the high school times a little off. I can just email him and make sure he has the high school times correct. But if you guys are going to be trying to be aware of what time the high school goes back and forth, I just want you to have a very specific time, and the start time is changing in the fall also. So I know that's not supposed to be a big issue, but just in case, you should know. There is a light at the corner, I guess this is a question from Mohammed. There's a light right at the end of your facility, a very, very bright light. It seems to go in all directions. It seems to be there for when the trucks are probably checking out or something. But it has bulbs that face also right down on Bartlett Street, and it's very distracting. When cars are driving down Bartlett Street, I forgot to put this in my letter. And multiple people have complained about it, and John's gotten a lot of emails about it, I know. So if you could, John mentioned that maybe you could put some sort of shield on the side of the light that faces the street, that faces Bartlett Street, because it is very dark down there, that would be great. So if you could just look into that. And, okay, my other question here was, so your last mile centers are the ones with all the vans. Would there be a last mile center going in anywhere around here?
Brad, would you be able to speak to that?
Sure, as of right now, I don't believe there is a project under consideration for our last mile network in Northborough.
Okay, so, no.
As we sit here this evening, but we are constantly evaluating new potential opportunities. But as we sit here this evening, there's no considered prospective project in Northborough at this time.
And how big do those facilities have to be, the last mile facilities?
From a square footage standpoint, those facilities, some of the smallest ones in very tight knit urban environments can be as small as 20,000 square feet total. The largest delivery stations typically may be 180,000 to 200,000 square feet of operational space.
Okay, so like the building would be that big, or the whole?
Correct.
Okay.
And were you able to get my answer earlier? I lost connection out here.
No, I didn't hear you.
All right, so, so what I was saying, so what we have is a temporary light fixture right now, and I'm pretty sure we can do something around it. It's at our guard shack where the trailers are checking in and checking out. So it's more for temporary solve, but we'll find a permanent solution. So, but I can look at what we can do to kind of change the angle of our lights.
Great, thank you, yeah, that's a big concern. And the signs are great, but they do seem kind of small to those of us. I don't know if they seem small to the truck drivers. The color is really nice and everything, but the signs that everybody's been talking about that you, that you put up, do seem, no, no, I'm getting an echo, you have to hang up. Sorry, everyone wants to talk to me, mom.
Kristen, you referring to the signage for drivers exiting?
Yeah, the driver, yeah, to tell you where the highway is. They just seem a little small. So I don't know if that might be, a couple of people have mentioned that to me, and I'm sort of the person that everybody comes to with a lot of questions in the neighborhood. So that was just one more thing. If down the road you need more solutions, I am also one of the people with the wildlife camera that I don't take pictures of wildlife, I take pictures of your trucks. And I can tell you that in the middle of the night, more of them are cheating than in the daytime. We don't get very many in the daytime, but at night, it's like 75% more. So John's idea of the, well, it was actually, yeah, like a group idea, but John mentioned it, which was great about having a video camera. So you guys can keep track of who would be really nice. We would really, we would really appreciate it.
As was mentioned earlier, it is a condition of the site approval. And with technology being what it is, it's not a very big investment to be able to provide that capability for Amazon to monitor the entering and exiting of all of its traffic.
Yeah, you really, you know what? You can probably get one at a pretty good price on Amazon, actually, that's where I got mine. So I'm sure you guys get that joke all the time, thank you for laughing. But yeah, so I have been tracking, and you're, I, a lot of the trucks, you can't see the logo at night, but you can see the Amazon one, it glows in the dark. I don't know if you knew that, but it's pretty easy to see. So Mohammed, if you, if you're, the drivers that are going in the middle of the night, if you could make a special effort to kind of let them know, like, people are watching, and we're getting feedback, but I'm not getting like the truck number or the cab number, you know? The license plate number, I don't, I don't have that information. So that would be, if you guys could have a camera, you could have it so that you could see all the numbers on the trucks, we would, that would be great. So, yeah, let's see. Okay, I guess.
Anything further, Kristen?
Um, just one.
Any more questions, yeah.
Right, I think that's why my husband was trying to come in. He just wanted to confirm the number of, all right, one more, I got one more. Two more questions, confirm the number of employees? So is it really right around 1,400 employees, or?
Not simultaneously onsite.
Not at the same time.
Mohammed, you had mentioned something about the numbers earlier.
Yeah, no, that's a very inflated number. Currently, we are going to be averaging around 600 people across the two sites. And if business really picks up, then obviously the numbers will change. But at this moment in time around April, we're going to be only targeting 600 between the two sites. And that's also been across all shifts.
Great.
And Mohammed, when you say when business picks up, you're talking about potentially spikes, seasonal spikes?
Christmas. Yep, something like that.
Right, okay.
Yeah, right, okay, that makes sense, that makes sense. Okay, so parking might be an issue for your employees if they're all trying to park at your facility when the numbers get high, because you don't have a ton of parking spaces up there.
We have, we have enough between the two sides. So like, again, like 600, we're not going to see all at once. So in a shift, we may only see about 200 or 220 between the two sites. And between the two buildings, we have about 400 parking slips, so.
Okay, four shifts, even if the numbers go up at Christmas time next year, you know, in about a year, you should still have enough. Okay, another thing, Mohammed, this would probably be something for you also. Because we still are having trucks turning around in Sturrock Lane, because we are the first opportunity for them to turn when they do miss. So they're coming from 495, they're doing everything right. I had a conversation with one of these drivers about a month ago, who was driving his 18-wheeler down the middle of Sturrock Lane when I was walking my dog. So I just went and chatted with him, and he was a very nice guy. He said that I just didn't see the sign. So we've noticed that you've put the sign up facing Cedar Hill Road where they're coming in. But at night, it doesn't look like it's lit up. So even with their headlights, and it's tilted a little bit towards your building, so your temporary sign, so if you could work on that a little bit, maybe we won't have anybody turning around. And I do feel like Sturrock Lane is kind of taking one for the team here because the next place that the truck could conceivably turn around would be the high school, and we really don't want them doing that. So if they have to turn around here till you guys get your sign figured out, you know, it's not great, but it's better than the high school, please don't send them there.
Yeah, no, we do plan to have temporary lighting, even if I can get some solar lightings out there, I will be doing that, and then we'll follow with the general contractor and see if we can have some outlets to have more of a permanent solution, even with lighting. So that's something I'll be doing this week.
Great, great, because I think they see the FedEx sign and they think, oh, this is FedEx, it's not my turn. And then they realize what they did, so. Okay, great, thank you so much for letting me come on and ask.
One quick question, where did you say they are turning toward? Is it Lynn Street or Maple Street?
The, what?
Are they making, are they making a lift on Lynn or Maple? Like, I'm trying to understand where.
Lyman?
Yeah.
Lyman.
Oh, it's Lyman, sorry, Lyman. Are they making a Lyman, okay?
No, they are, they're turning, they turn, yeah, they turn left out of your facility. Then if they're going to Route 9, they turn left on Lyman. And if they're going to 290, so that's another way to go west. A lot of times they cut through town, so they go all the way down Bartlett Street to Route 20, and then to Church Street to get to 290, which, you know, that's, then that's affecting not just our neighborhood, but this is why so many people care, because it affects everybody around Main Street and everybody on Church Street in that neighborhood. It is, it is a big deal, so growing pains are no growing pains. It's really, you know, if it's on your site plan, you guys should definitely listen to the boss, Mr. Codair, okay? I appreciate it. Thanks for letting me come on.
All right, Kristen, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I, just one thing I would like to follow up is, the signage at the end of the road, at the end of Amazon's driveway is appropriate. It's the right size, it is standard. That is the signage that the town requested, and the size and location that we asked them to put that signage up. It's the same at 301, it's the same at the A D U E pile site, so it is appropriate. Larger signage is not the answer. Training drivers and communicating to your drivers is the answer. We had no signage or one little 11 by 17 sign at A D U E pile site. And we had no issues with the trucks because they were able to train the drivers. So, but as far as the signage that's at the end of the driveway, it's appropriate. It's not supposed to be any bigger, nor would it be any bigger. That's the signage, and it is adequate.
Okay, thank you, John. Leslie, you have a question?
Yeah, I was going to make the same comment, that I've driven up there myself a couple of times and did a UE in the driveway of Amazon and took a look at those signs. And I think that if that's the standard size of sign that truckers are used to having to look for, then I am happy with that. Also realize that they are looking at these signs from much higher than I am in my vehicle. So they look like they're at the right height, it's the size they're used to looking at. I am perfectly happy with that. And so I don't, I just didn't want the Amazon reps here to think that I'm on board with the idea that those signs are inappropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Any other questions from members of the board? Any other questions or comments from staff members?
Just appreciate them, Amazon coming here tonight, and I appreciate the open line of communication. And if need be, I assume you'd be willing to come back in a couple of months if things aren't going as smoothly as we all anticipate that they will be?
Absolutely.
We would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
If I could just circle back and check briefly here. Do we have any action items or homework assignments that we're following up on at this time?
I've got a, I've got a list that I'll be following up with Amazon.
Very good, okay. All right.
I'd be happy to copy the board on it.
Yes, excellent. And so I'll just say on behalf of the town and the board and the residents, thank you, gentlemen, for being here tonight, for having this discussion. We appreciate the cooperation that's been ongoing to this point, and we look forward to continuing to work constructively to resolve these issues and bring about a good outcome for everybody. So, thank you very much, and enjoy your evening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks a lot.
Okay. Next up. Next on the agenda, waiting for our health agent, Kristen Black. There's Kristen, Kristen Black, health agent, to give us another COVID-19 update. Welcome, Kristen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, members of the board and selectmen for inviting me here tonight. So I'm going to share a really brief presentation. I know we're, you know, an hour or so in, so I'll try to keep this brief and happy to answer any questions you may have. So are you all seeing my screen?
Uh, yes.
Okay, great. So I just want to jump in with a real brief review on our numbers. We're continuing to see our numbers, you know, decrease. This was the update from Friday of last week. So again, we're still posting weekly on Friday, and most of these numbers are based off the state's report that comes out on that Thursday. So our percent positivity has dropped down to just over 2.5%. Remember, at one point, we were well over 5, that's why we went red. So we're seeing that number come down. Approximate number of active cases, so this is how many people in our community are in an active infection or home isolating was 39. And I think as of this afternoon report I sent to you, parent is at 32. So less actively infected people in our community, so that's all good news. So you're going to see, we're really starting to drop here. So everybody, you know, in our community has been doing a great job, keep up the great work. Public health nurses, we're still referring cases to the CTC, but excited to see that down. I think the same message you're all hearing that we want to continue to convey to all residents is, you know, there are new strains. You know, there's some people that are predicting we may see an increase as some of these mutant strains or new strains become more dominant in Massachusetts. So stay diligent. And so I really want to just cover today the vaccination plan. So highlighted here in the center, we're currently in phase two. As of last, was it last Monday? I've lost track, it's sort of a blur with February vacation. But we opened up to the next category, which is again, our age 65-plus individual with two or more comorbidities. Now the state calls that medical conditions, and anybody in affordable or low-income senior housing. So we are in that next category, and that's really where we're focusing. Just overall from the state, you know, they just opened last week with that category. It's important to note that that new group, that second bullet we're looking at there is over a million people estimated by the state, and the state's only receiving right around 110,000 doses a week. So when the state says everybody's going to take a while to get an appointment, it's going to take a long while, not a couple of weeks, you know? So if you do the math on that, I'd say we're at least a month and a half out, if not two months or more to reach everybody in that category. And a lot of that depends upon how many of those people are willing or interested in the vaccine. So just to talk about our local clinics, we've held 200-dose Moderna vaccine clinics on Fridays for residents aged 75 and older. And so that was February 4th and 11th. We were planning a clinic last week on February 18th, but that was postponed due to the shipping delays that were really experienced across the country. The vaccine just couldn't get out of the sites because of the severe weather we were seeing nationally. So those doses, we did receive them on Friday, you know, too late to hold the clinic, they came later on Friday. But we are holding those, and the great news is, we're going to start with all the good news first here, is there a senior center did an incredible job. Um, is there a senior center um did an incredible job with outreach? And they helped to identify another seventy residents that are in that seventy-five category. So of the hundred doses we were planning for last week, um, we've identified seventy residents that um still were looking for the vaccine. So we're really trying to make sure we hit that seventy-five plus category hard before we start opening up um vaccinations locally to that next category. So and in the great news today, I did just this evening, received shipment notification tomorrow at ten thirty, we're gonna have another hundred doses. So we um, we're anticipate running a two hundred dose clinic this Friday. And so that's gonna be the seventy that were registered by the seniors, that seventy-five plus. And I anticipate um releasing that link. So I know a lot of people are, when are we gonna have the link? When are the sites gonna, you know, it's gonna open? Um, I'm gonna wait to receive that vaccine and make sure we receive it and everything's um in good order. And then around noon tomorrow, we'll release those hundred and thirty approximate appointments um, using that online um listserv we've created. So I can select to say just the sixty-five plus two or more medical conditions and we'll also post that to the town's website. So just to speak a little bit more about the senior center outreach, um, the staff at the senior center and volunteers first started with the town clerk census list. And this included approximately thirteen hundred residents aged over seventy-five. They then narrowed down this list to approximately seven hundred and fifty-three individuals, once they removed all of our nursing home or assisted living residents, who were obviously vaccinated through the facility. We also removed anyone who was vaccinated at our senior center clinics at the Hopkinton Regional Clinic and the Whittier Rehab. Um, they, obviously, we talked about before how they've helped to vaccinate some of our residents. And we also pulled out our housing authority residents and I'll talk about that a little bit more later. So again, the list was narrowed down to seven hundred and fifty-three. The senior center staff and volunteers were able to reach um six hundred and ninety residents over a week and a half um to make contact with them. And again, as I said earlier, seventy residents were um identified and registered for the uh upcoming clinic. So they did that over the phone to make it really easy for our seniors. So big thanks to our senior center staff, Jocelyn Erhart, Nancy Dragon and Liz um Chretiak, oh, who helped to coordinate and make many of those calls. We also had two volunteer callers, Northborough teacher, um Catherine Arcana, if I'm saying that right, and Junior Women's Club Martha um Miklavich. So thank you to all of them um for that, you know, huge effort. And even we did have a few, you could see we're missing a few numbers there. And our very generous chief of police even called me this afternoon to tell me uh that, you know, if we have just those few remaining, he's willing to send some of his offer, officers door to door with a flyer. So um, we're gonna do everything we can to make sure our most vulnerable residents, seventy-five plus um do have that opportunity and we make it easy for them to receive the vaccine. So um, just want to touch briefly upon homebound vaccinations. So these are individuals that are currently eligible, but for whatever reason, you know, it's very difficult for them to leave their home um to get vaccinated locally or at one of these regional sites. So um, I'm working with the fire department staff and we do have a plan developed for them um where we will have likely a fire department um E M T who's actually gonna go house to house. We're working out the details on the observation window. Um, so we're really have developed the plan to really um help everybody with this. Um, you know, so even homebound individuals and we're encouraging anybody who is homebound. This is included on our town website and any of our um notifications we've set out that please call the senior center or the um Northborough Health Department and we'll make sure we have you on a list and we'll reach out um about scheduling those visits. Unless you mentioned affordable senior housing vaccinations, so those are eligible under this new second tab or category. Um, so just today, I learned again this afternoon, lots of good news. Um, D P H confirmed that we did receive our hundred doses and sort of their first distribution to senior housing. So I don't know how we made it for the first week, but I'm glad we're there. So I know there are about a hundred and twenty-two individuals identified in senior housing. We received about, we're going to receive um early next week, a hundred doses. I'm also in contact with the um Southborough Health Director. They received more because it's all in increments of a hundred with Moderna. They have around sixty-six individuals, so the balance that they don't need, they're gonna um have offered up to us, so we can make sure we hit our numbers for our housing authority. We will be holding that clinic at the Northborough um Senior Center. That's gonna be on next Friday, assuming the shipment arrives in the afternoon. So we're gonna have some second doses in the morning. Um, and then we'll move on to accommodate um those individuals and we'll work directly with the senior, uh, the Northborough Housing Authority staff to register those individuals um and help them through that process. So I guess now the bad news, um, I think many of you may have heard, it's been big, um, big news across the state that Secretary Sutter's issued a letter on January seventeenth. And it, um, ultimately, this is an excerpt straight out of the letter that says, effective on March fourth, the state is no longer providing first dose vaccines for individual municipal clinics, um, except for these twenty disproportionately impacted communities. We're not one of them. Worcester is, for example. Um, so what that means is that we can't continue to hold just, just town of Northborough clinics starting March first. Um, that isn't gonna jeopardize our ability to hold these second dose clinics. Um, and so anyone who's already been vaccinated at the senior center, they will still receive their second dose at the senior center. Um, I'll put in a request, actually, it's due tomorrow, to try to get some more locally, but most likely um those shipments would be next week. So we're that, we're gonna see that source of vaccine dry up. Um, so where Secretary Sutter's went with this letter and saying no more local clinics, you know, one-off community clinics. Um, and they're really, this is again, another expert excerpt um out of the letter from the seventeen. They said municipalities can propose regional collaborations that meet specific, you know, these geographical um groups are identified by the state. And then there's these five bullets. And so we're really working through this process now. It's, it's fairly, um, it's a big jump. We were planning locally to run two days, around three hundred doses a day, which would be six hundred a week. Um, we thought that was within our, you know, staffing levels. Um, but now the state's looking for these regional approaches with a minimum of seven hundred and fifty individual day, uh, individuals per day, five days a week. Uh, they're also looking that these clinics will be posted on the statewide site. And so at that point, obviously, there's some concerns. What's the benefit of running a clinic if we're really just vaccinating people from all over the whole Commonwealth? Um, you know, because it's a huge strain on our staff. So um, I'm gonna, I'll talk about that a little bit in next episode of planning. So really, you say, what are our options for our residents, right? The state won't give it to us locally. Where do you go? The state is pushing everybody now. Go on the state website, figure out how to make an appointment. Um, you know, if you know anyone who's lucky enough in the sixty-five category, just secure an appointment, give them a high five. I haven't heard too many like good stories about people finding appointments. They're hard to come by right now and it's gonna be that way for a while. So again, the mass vaccination sites, the closest to us on this map are these red, you know, Natick's a new site. Um, Worcester is opened up and is sort of off to the left, obviously. Um, but we're finding those appointments typically released on Thursday morning um weekly, and that's sort of been the case all along with these sites, but as many of you heard, the state's website crashed um during that, you know, release of those. So it was very difficult for residents. We weren't really able to, not like early on, we helped residents find appointments. Um, they just went so quickly. You know, there's a lot of demand and that's a large category. It's currently open, so we haven't given up all hope. Um, I, we know it's stressful for our residents. I think we know COVID has been stressful. And now to think there's finally, you know, um, this great light at the end of the tunnel and people can't get it, you know, it's extremely frustrating. And um, and we want to help them through that. So the town of Northborough, we are, um, actually, we're at a meeting today. Um, I was there with the fire chief and town administrators um that were part of our previous regional collaboration um for our first responder clinic and that Hopkington clinic that took place. So we're trying to use that existing relationship um in a proposal will be sent off to the state in some form in the next couple of days. And we're gonna try to foster that regional relationship um with likely a centrally located site. Um, we do have one site in mind, um, that we're just waiting for um confirmation from the, you know, tenant or owner that we would be able to use it. Um, in that, that site and with this regional effort, we are confident we could hit those numbers seven hundred and fifty a day, five days a week, if the state ever sent us that much. Um, so a lot of this, I just want to say, you know, we as a town are doing everything we can to try to make vaccine available for our residents. We want to help them with online registration. And we are going to try to play the game and now move towards this regional option. Really, as soon as this week, we have the proposal drafted. We're just gonna have everybody, you know, make their final edits. Um, and then we'll be looking to push that out and um, and we'll report back to all of you um if that proposal is approved by D P H. So I guess that's, um, that's really all I have for slides and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
You think. Uh, first, I'll uh, thank you very much, Kristen, for the, the details. I think there has been a lot of concern with the uh actions of the state for how they're going to redeploy uh vaccine uh uh getting away from the municipal operations and going toward regional. Uh, I'd just like to ask John and, and Chief Parenti if they want to just offer any comments since they've been heavily involved in uh making some of these arrangements as well. John? Uh, you're muted, John.
I'm usually, I never, usually I never unmute myself because I always want to talk, so. Um, I was gonna say that uh, you know, we were all very frustrated by the state's decision. Uh, it was a hundred and eighty degrees from what we were told even uh a month and a half ago. You know, as municipalities, we train to do uh, to do this type of pandemic response. We have our plans, we've implemented them, and now we're being told that they're going to a different model. In your packet, we included two letters and not to steal the, the fire chief's thunder here, but there's a letter from the Association of Fire Chiefs, and then there's a letter from the Mass Municipal Association, basically outlining our heartburn and our concerns over this uh decision. And one of the things that we did, uh, the first clinic that we ran, we invited our state reps to that. And the state reps got, because we wanted them to see the operation. Because when you see the fact that we send the senior center van out to pick up a resident with mobility issues in a handicapped accessible van, they come to the senior center. The police officer helps them out, gets him into a wheelchair. Additional staff brings that person in. They're greeted by the outreach worker that they know at the senior center for all their other needs and help. They then routed through with faces that they know. They're put back on and assisted to get back on and taken home. You want to tell me what mass vaccination site is gonna do that for our seniors? And what, and what site that mass vaccination site's gonna be capable of providing that level of service to people with mobility issues? Or maybe are afraid or confused to have issues with getting uh to a, to a larger site? So we're not happy. We, a- as a, as a fire chief said, you know, our staff, you want to see a bunch of happy paramedics? They're up there. They, those guys were beaming up there giving shots because they trained to help. We all trained to do this. And it was working beautifully. And the state cannot step in and fill our shoes at this level. We asked, we want to be able to finish uh taking care of our seniors, particularly those in need. And just because you're seventy-five and old, it doesn't mean you're the only ones with mobility issues or other problems, you know, sixty-five and plus, we've got a population there. We know who they are. Allow us to serve them directly. Um, but moving forward, we, we should be able to take care of our teachers, our D P W folks. Uh, and, and particularly our seniors and populations in need. The state mass vaccination sites, in our opinion, aren't designed and set up to, to provide that level of service. We are and we're capable of doing it and we're doing it in an extraordinary fashion. Now, I had a conversation with Representative Gregoire and Representative uh Megan Kilcoin today. They were thoroughly impressed with our operation and they are providing the feedback that we gave them that we would like the administration to modify their approach. Allow the municipalities to continue to provide their clinics, particularly to get through the, the seniors and our own staff so that we can hold schools safely and our D P W folks can do their jobs. We've already taken care of our, our first responders, our police and fire. Um, again, everything was working perfectly. We're just frustrated, but if forced to, uh, we have taken, Northborough has taken the lead on this regional approach. Uh, Kristen and the, and the fire chief, I, I can't say enough about the team that we have, that's, that's leading the charge. Uh, we're gonna continue to provide the highest level of service that we possibly can as, that's allowed by the state. That's our plan. So we're gonna see it through until they tell us you're getting no more vaccine or you cannot operate. Until then, we're gonna, we're gonna continue and that's the plan. You've seen in my correspondence the operation, the, the, the phrase is, we're gonna stay the course. So that's what we're gonna do. But, but right now, you've gotten some feedback, guys, from the seniors that have gone through our clinic so far. These are people you can't send. You can't some, send some of these folks to Fenway or, or to Foxborough. That, that's just not the right level of service. And, and the fear is that they're just not going to go and they're not gonna get taken care of if we can't, if we can't do it. Uh, we're working, as Kristen said, on a plan to deal with folks who are homebound. We're gonna take care of them. We want to take care of our people. That's what we do. And uh, the state will provide us the doses. We're gonna see this through as far as we can, but we will pivot and we'll go regional if we have to. Um, and we'll play an, an integral role in that to make sure that our residents at least have access to something that is reasonably close by, um, if we're able to do that, so. So my two cents, maybe, maybe a quarter, but I'll, I'll, I'll kick it through the chair over to the fire chief. He's got anything to add.
I always, I always have something to add. Are you kidding? Do I, when do I not have something to add? I, I just have, have, have two comments and one is which to, to expound on on uh what Kristen and, and John said, which is, you know, uh, the letter from F CAM from the Fire Chiefs Association. It's very difficult to get a whole bunch of fire chiefs to agree on anything. But when you get a whole bunch of fire chiefs and you get the professional firefighters of Massachusetts on the same board arguing for the same, you know, all on board arguing for the same thing, that tells you something, how important this is. And, and John's right, my guys are thrilled to be up there helping out and do everything they can. And I just want to tell one little anecdotal story that, that. So my wife and my daughter are volunteering, Kristen's husband's volunteering, they're all up there helping out. And my, my, my wife came to me the other day, she says, you know, I was registering, registering someone for their second appointment. It's a gentleman and he started crying. And she says, my, my, I'm so sorry, what's wrong? Uh, she goes, he goes, no, no. I'm just so happy I was able to come here in town, get my shot, and now I'll be able to see my family. And she's like, you know, she, she, she was just amazed by that. And, and, and it was just like, uh, now we're gonna take those people and ship them across the state somewhere else. If, do we, if we can do it. And it's just very frustrating, so. Uh, we'll keep fighting, we'll keep doing what we can and Kristen's leading the charge and she's beating on D P H and uh hopefully we'll get somewhere with it. So, and again, a big thanks, if I just want to take a second. All the town employees who have volunteered to help, all the spouses and children and uh, all the volunteer nurses we've had, it is just amazing. Uh, sometimes we have to beat them off with a stick. We have so many people that want to help and it's just terrific. So a big thank you to all of them.
Thank you very much, Chief Parenti. Uh, uh, certainly, uh, a lot of support from the community. Uh, Kristen, I did have one question, just to point a clarification. For all of the people who have been through the municipal clinics uh, and have received their first dose. Uh, there's assurance that we're gonna be able to administer the second doses as well. Um, there's no disruption to what their expectations are gonna be about where they go uh to receive that. Is that right?
Correct. Yep. So at Mary Lou Sutter's, um, you know, Secretary Sutter's letter there, she did say this doesn't affect second doses. So we do anticipate to keep those um at that same site. So we sent an email um to all our seniors once that letter came out, Secretary Sutter's, everyone who is already registered. You know, just clarifying, your appointment is guaranteed. So um, I know that caused a lot of confusion for people, but yes, we are, you know, the state is still allowing for us to receive second doses.
Okay, and it is the case that uh we don't have those doses on hand at the moment that we're, the expectation is they still have to be delivered and allocated to the community to, to provide those, right?
Correct.
Okay. Uh, questions from the board, Leslie?
Yeah, thanks, Kristen. Um, what, do you know what the state is looking for in terms of uh approval of a regional uh vaccine uh clinic? Uh, what are they looking for? Oh, good, you're able to group together ten communities? Or is it X percent that, you know, uh, population amounts? Or what are they looking for, do you think?
I, I know they're looking to fill gaps, right? So like, I know they've sort of given some preliminary approval, maybe down to Uxbridge because they don't really have a site and they have some towns gathering together. I've heard there's a preliminary approval off with Rutland, you know, they put a big team together. You know, those are areas when you look at the map where you just don't see any dots. Um, but you know, you can look at the map and in on, uh, at first glance, it looks like, wow, there's a lot of dots. But when that dot is a pharmacy, like Wegmans, let's say, that it's great they're out there. But you know, their capacity is twenty-six doses a day, whatever. It's small. They don't have a big observation area. Um, so I think that's a great question, Leslie. I wish I, I knew the answer. Um, you know, I just hearing from the state, they're looking at regional collaboration and um, and they're looking to sort of fill areas that have a need. So I would anticipate a town next to Foxborough wouldn't be entertained because you have a mass vaccination site in your backyard is sort of my guess. Um, so I don't really know. And even if I knew, it could change tomorrow, but um I think we've just, yeah, we've just heard it's really about filling gaps and where there's a need for communities. And I think, you know, we have, um, you look at the numbers, the communities that we talked with today. Um, all in total, you know, at least eighty thousand residents. It was what, at least thirteen thousand sixty-five plus? Um, and that group could grow slightly. So I mean, that's a lot of people looking for the vaccine. Um, and you know, it's the same statewide, right? People just aren't successful. Um, we're all, you know, everybody's in the same race to find those online appointments. And the one thing we're hearing from the state, if we can hold a regional clinic, the state's gonna give us twenty-four hours to get that notification out to our seniors in advance of it going public. And we all know this mixed group is pretty savvy, um, and we also have those volunteers to reach out and make sure we could fill that locally just to give them one leg up, um, because again, we have the resources and we think there's the need, and, um, and we don't have that convenience of sending our senior center van, you know, off to a mass vaccination site, that's just too far, um, and you are hearing more of the state, and I just received a Walgreens notification that, you know, through my personal email, that they have partnered with Uber. Like, to solve these problems, that, you know, I, I'm not gonna book a senior on an Uber, I mean, it just seems so complicated, so. Um, you know, we're hoping to fill that void, and I think we have a good argument, and I think that we've had a regional collaboration, it's already stood up, they allotted, you know, a full Pfizer shipment of around a thousand doses to Hopkinton. And, um, and we were successful in filling that locally. And, um, and they were administered within a week of receipt, so I think we have a good reputation as this regional partnership, um, and so I'm hopeful.
Wonderful, thank you so much, thank you for your efforts, Kristen.
I'm sorry I'm catching up here, I had a little bit of a dropout, uh, momentarily.
Thought you were just paralyzed by.
I just.
Stunned by that amazing presentation.
Dazzled by the question and response, uh, Tim, why don't you go ahead?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, for, for Kristen and for, for the chief, um, thanks for all the, all, all the work you're doing, it's just amazing. Um, is there anything that we can be doing as a board to help out with any of your objectives, is there, is there any resources that we could give you, any support, anything that we could do as a board, be it letters, be it, I, I don't even know, but if there's something that, that we can do as a board to add any weight to what you're trying to do, please let us know, I'm, I'm sure that, you know, all the other members would be, be happy to, to spend some time to craft letters or whatever it is that you need that would be helpful.
That, that's a great question, Kristen, what do you think, I, I think maybe a obviously, we'd like to keep it local, and we don't want to even join a, join a regional if we don't have to, but if we have to, a letter of support both ways would help, you know, uh, to say, hey, we'd love to keep it local, but if we can't, we're in this partnership, we really encourage you to approve this partnership, I don't know if we need them, but it can't hurt, Kristen, what do you think?
No, I, I think, you know, and I'm gonna probably kick it to John, um, you know, he's better with the politicians and knowing what's happening, there is a legislative session, right, uh, some discussion happening on Thursday, um, you know, we're not the only community, you know, that's reeling from this, and I, I think the story that I'd like to tell, and we, we are at a, our, all our community is at a period, um, we've never been this low, right, we're, we're at a period where we're isolated. And I think what we see with that local clinic, it isn't just the vaccination and the hope, it's their first reconnection for so many with their community. And it's also a healing process for our whole community, to see our town staff that were just beaming going, we haven't been together in, you know, a year, and, you know, it was a healing process for the whole community, staff involved, the volunteers, and, you know, so I think this vaccination process can be bigger than the ninety-five percent immunity you gain from your vaccine, you know, it's the whole community healing and hope and coming together, and I think that was what was pretty magical, and just, um, a bit more than just getting your jab and going on with your day. And so I think the power of local community, local public health is, is, is really important. And it's needed when people feel more isolated than ever, um, and they've been so disconnected, so to go send them to a mass vaccination site where they don't know anyone, and that's an intimidating process in itself, doesn't really help them heal through the isolation and, and everything else they've been experiencing.
I, I think that's a great, great point, Kristen, I think, uh, we found we had a big hangup on our first, uh, vaccination clinic at the second registration, because we're registering people for their second vaccine, we're like, why, it should only take like, ten minutes? Well, when we have people out there and the people just, it's their first time away and they're talking to people, and they were just, the, the seniors were having a ball talking to all the people registering them, because they were actually communicating with somebody in person. You know, so i- i- it, it would be great if we could just maintain that.
If, if I may through the chair.
Can I just add one more comment, John, just before, just before, sorry, um. And I, I just want to add to all that, that point, if, if to whoever the decision maker on the other end, that, that, that Kristen and, and the chief are dealing with, if a letter from the Board of Selectmen stating that we as a Board of Selectmen in this community fully support the efforts of our health agent and our, our, our safety personnel to have this type of facility in our community. If that would help, if they, if the decision makers know that not only do they have your support, but they have the support of the board and the community for this type of, of operation, if that, if that would help. Recommendation, if you go to college in a way, you know, like.
What I was gonna, what I was gonna say, Tim, is, is, you know, again, remember, your next meeting, you're gonna have your legislative delegation in here. Our legislative delegation understands exactly the position of the Board of Selectmen. Uh, everything that we've discussed here, you guys have been in the loop, you probably get more emails about the status of, of, uh, the clinics than, than, uh, than you would like, but you are very much in, in, in the know in terms of what's happening on a day-to-day basis. We will make sure that you are, so we are speaking with one voice, but at your next meeting, you're gonna have your legislative delegation here in person. I think it cannot hurt, uh, to have, uh, as part of that discussion, because remember, we put our priority letter together and it went out, right? Then we got this kind of dropped on us on February seventeenth. So I, I would hope at our next meeting that the board would take a couple of moments to emphasize to our delegation how critical these services are and ask for their support in influencing, because you gotta remember now, this is the, this is the administration's decision. Not necessarily the, not necessarily the legislature, the legislature in, to some extent, that they're our ally and advocating for this, so it's helpful for them, I think, to hear that at your next meeting as well.
Thank you, John.
Okay, perfect, thank you, John.
Do that end, uh. I lose, uh, anecdote. Gonna wait it out until I unfreeze.
Hello? We can hear you.
Can you hear me? Great, I think I've just returned to, to life here. Uh, I was going to ask, uh, considering that our legislative delegation is going to be here, considering that we've already sent our legislative priorities letter to them. Um, on this particular topic, I think that's a very uh, excellent, uh, uh, point you make, Kristen, about the, just the personal contact that these people experience when they come in uh, to the local municipality, uh, that perhaps isn't really being recognized, so I wonder if, uh, I, not as if you don't have enough on your plate already, but if you and the chief perhaps could draft something brief in writing that kind of captures that experience and, uh, something we can kind of use as a additional reinforcing point, not simply for the, you know, uh, not only for the fact that at the municipal level, we're better prepared to, to treat the people in our community, uh, and we have the staff and training poised to do it, but also that in addition to receiving the vaccinations, many of these people are just getting their first experience of human contact, uh, that's been missing from their lives for quite a while, and, uh, you can't underestimate what that additional benefit really provides to them, so. Uh, if there's something additional we could present to our legislative delegates that, uh, kind of makes that point, uh, that would be very, very helpful. And any other questions or comments from the board? Yes, Scott?
Yeah, so I, I've been sitting back trying to think, you know, the right way to phrase it, come up with the words, and, you know, other than thank you for the priority and attention and the professionalism, I just think there's not much more, nothing more important we could be doing, and, uh, I, I don't know how to express that, uh, in the proper way, so just, thank you, thank you for the, all that's being done.
Very, uh, very impressive effort, uh, I have to say, and, uh, all positive feedback, certainly, so. Uh, if there's nothing more, uh, thank you very much, Kristen, um. And, uh, we look forward to probably to seeing you again at our next meeting.
Thanks, Kristen.
Which brings us well past the hour of eight twenty PM, and we have Scott Sharptier, Public Works Director, update on Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Grant Program Applications. Scott?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's just, just a minute past eight twenty, um, can I share my screen and I can give you some graphics?
You should be able to, Scott.
Okay. So, uh, town of Northborough applied under the, uh, Mass DOT Shared Winter Streets and Spaces Grant Program under their round three grants, uh, that was submitted in January with the, uh, the grant award announcements in February. Uh, what you see before you is the project that we submitted on in round three. Uh, unfortunately, that grant was not awarded. Uh, we were not awarded funds for it, there was a lot of work put in by, uh, by staff, including the Senior Senate Director, uh, Recreation Director, Conservation Agent, myself. Uh, the project certainly isn't, uh, isn't, isn't gone. Um, we have a nice layout that's been prepared by our landscape architect. It's approximately three quarters of a mile, uh, wheelchair accessible trail around the senior center grounds that you can see, it links up with the existing Edmonds Hill Trail Network. It has a few different loops, um, some more challenging loops as well as shorter ones, and some seating vistas. So again, this project is, uh, was, was submitted for grant funding through Mass DOT Shared Winter Streets Program. In their third round, it was not awarded, a total project cost is two hundred and forty thousand dollars. Uh, but the project has not, um, is not, is not gone, we're actively pursuing other funding mechanisms. And, uh, the AARP actually has a grant program, it's referred, it's their Community Challenge Grant Program. Um, the, the, the funds are, are much smaller, they're not, they're not, uh, awarding up to a quarter of a million dollars. But there is adequate funds for, uh, preliminary design and cost estimate, uh, development. So, uh, we're gonna be pursuing that, that application is due, uh, in April, and the announcement will be, um, in May, so. Uh, we're gonna work toward that application, and hopefully some, some grant funds come our way, and we can see the product, pro- project progress a little bit. We are submitting a, uh, application for the fourth and final round of the, uh, DOT Shared Winter Streets Program. Um, it's a smaller scale project, what we're looking to do is, uh, address a lot of the goals in the program. The program cites specifically, um, improvements for pedestrian access for children and seniors to, uh, destinations, recreation facilities. So we've had a lot of, uh, discussion on the general public over the past years, a few years about crosswalk safety. Some of the concerns are with mid-block crosswalks, which you will see uh, here, so this is, uh, Longfellow Road and South Street by Ellsworth McAfee Park, um, there's a mid-block crosswalk that crosses South Street. Um, it, it currently has signs, but there is no additional safety measures on it. So we've identified four crosswalks to do some safety, uh, enhancements uh, in and around our recrea- recreational facilities. So the first one you see again is at South Street, uh, near Longfellow Road. What we're proposing is, uh, pedestrian activated rapid flashing beacons to be installed, um, new signs, new, uh, reflective pavement markings and cement concrete wheelchair ramps, you'll see the three blue polygons with white inside, those are cement concrete wheelchair ramps. Um, the blue circles would be the, uh, uh, beacons, the new beacons. We have those proposed at this location as well as Davis Ave, this is the, the southern limit of, um, Ellsworth McAfee Park, that's done by the skate park. We're also proposing a set at Asset Park, as well as a restriping of the crosswalk across Gale. The, um, wheelchair ramp on the north side of South Street nearest to the town center, that is already a, a cement concrete wheelchair ramp, so it is ADA accessible. And then the last one we're looking to do is here, uh, between Memorial Field and Casey Field. There's a lot of pedestrian access, uh, running back and forth between the fields for both players and, um, uh, adults. The major parking lot is on the Memorial Field side, and there's also activities at Casey. Uh, again, this is a mid-block crosswalk, um, drivers typically don't expect mid-block crossings, um, it's a, a, a relatively uh, easy improvement with the, uh, rapid flashing beacons to implement here. And it, it, it addresses a lot of the goals of the grant program. There are some, some restrictions with the grant program relative to timely expenditure that make this very challenging. So all the, uh, uh, grants awarded need to be expended by May thirty-first. This grant application is due February twenty-sixth. We'll get the announcements, um, March twenty-sixth, which leaves us a little over two months to, uh, purchase and install. The signs, the rapid flashing beacon signs, they're about a four-week lead item. We've already gone through, um, uh, proper procurement for those costs. The, um, DPW will be installing them, in order to get them, it's, uh, purchased and installed in time for the grant um, sunset on May thirty-first, and we'll be utilizing a local contractor for the cement concrete wheelchair ramps. So one of the pieces of this, um, grant program is public outreach. You probably saw through Town News and possibly some of our social media interfaces that a public notice was issued for this, uh, grant application. The, um, there's a lot of public interest, a variety of responses, both, uh, in the positive and, and in the request for more locations, um. So there's one other aspect of the grant that's somewhat small, but it's also very important, is, um, they want to, uh, improve, uh, multimodal use to our facilities, so we're including, uh, numerous bike racks at, um, at the parks. So Casey Memorial, Ellsworth McAfee, all received bike racks as well as part of the grant application. So again, it's a competitive grant, we're, we're gonna be submitting it, uh, by the end of the week. We've had a lot of positive, um, responses from the community, and, uh, the total grant application is just under fifty-eight thousand dollars. And again, the expectation is to have everything installed and operational, uh, before the end of May. So, uh, that's, that's, that's it in a nutshell.
It's, uh, excellent news, uh, Scott, uh, um. As you expressed, uh, um, some concern about the, the narrow window to get approved and then get everything complete to meet the requirements of, of the grant. And is it the case then that, uh, we front the expenditure? Uh, that the grant, grant funding is subject to us complete, actually completing the work and, and, and meeting the timeframe?
The, the grant funds are awarded in advance, um, so it's not a reimbursement grant. You know, in, in the perfect world, I would have loved to have expanded this to, um, more locations and have a public bid process, have a general contractor install it, um, have a cer- a, a, an engineering company do some survey. We don't have the time to do that, you know, I did the layout myself, uh, DPW staff will do the installations, I'm doing the procurement myself. Um, you know, it's a, uh, it's a time restrictive program, um, and in order for us to get as much as we can, we're doing it as quickly as we can.
Okay, so in a sense, the project is scaled to be able to meet the timeframe, and by taking advantage of the expertise of town staff to accomplish it as opposed to other uh, costly support services that might have been employed to do it.
Exactly.
Very good, excellent, uh, John, yes?
I, I, I just can't stress enough to the board, uh, and to the public, uh, all the work that went into that original, uh, project for the, uh, senior center, that, that ADA compliant trail is something we talked about since we built the senior center. And this grant program, everything lined up, on surface, it looked like it would have been a winner, but it's a grant, it's not a guarantee. Um, I just, I just want to publicly praise Scott for his quick pivot. He reached out to the folks that are responsible for the program, found out why that one did wasn't successful, got a clear indication of what they would look favorably on, uh, I mean, you're talking about, uh, this has got to be expended by May thirty-first, so it's due February twenty-sixth, and we find that, find out May twenty, uh, March twenty-sixth. That turnaround is incredible, for him to turn around, accept that that one wasn't gonna get funded, repackage it, get back in for this next round, and I, and we believe, uh, you know, you never know, uh, but we believe we've got a very strong grant this time through. But it would have been possible if Scott wasn't on top of this thing, and he really pushed this through, I, I I wasn't, I had to be honest with him, like, I'm not sure you're really gonna be able to turn this around. He's gotten it done though, as usual, so I just want to say, it's just a great job. And, uh, you know, for people to say, oh, why don't we apply for more grants, it's a tremendous amount of work, there's no guarantee. But we do go after every grant that is, that's reasonable, uh, that is, that, that we can, we have a chance of, of success. And, um, and that lines up with, uh, where it is that we want to go as a community, this very clearly does, and, you know, we're glad we'll be in the mix, we'll let you know, and fairly. In fairly short order, whether or not we were successful or whether or not Scott was successful. I want to give him credit for the work that he's done.
Great job. That's a great job. Thank you. I appreciate it, Scott. Among your many duties, uh, this is yet another, another example. Uh, Leslie, you have a comment?
Yeah. Scott, thank you. Uh, thanks for the graphics. So we could really look at what exactly you're talking about as opposed to just a list of the intersections and, and street areas that you were talking about. But, uh, those look like wonderful locations. I would have guessed maybe that those would have been the locations. And thank you for using the input you received, plus your own frame of reference for all the knowledge you have it about what's going on in town with the streets and the sidewalks and different issues. And I obviously that makes a big difference as far as determining what's important. So it's a lot of work. Thank you very much for all that.
You're welcome. It was very helpful. I received a lot of input on thoughts of other locations in town. Um, that could be considered for enhancements in the future. Um, which allowed me to add that to our, our, our rolling list and, um, you know, people, people coming out of their neighborhoods, letting me know what their needs are is, is, is always, uh, uh, thankful, you know?
Yeah. That's great. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, any other questions or comments? Board members? Hearing none. Uh, excellent work, Scott. Thank you very much. And we look forward to, uh, uh, successful grant, uh, decision and, uh, some improvements by the end of May. So.
That goes true.
Uh, this brings us to our, uh, riveting, uh, relocated consideration of minutes. So going back to our last meeting on February, uh, eighth. We were considering the approval of minutes of the January twenty fifth meeting and, uh, Julianne had a concern about our discussion. With respect to, um, town staff's recommendation, uh, relating to, uh, traffic safety, um, which included. As I understood it or, or thought about it, uh, three elements. One, uh, was the ongoing effort, uh, for town staff to respond to complaints and concerns as they were being received by the town and, uh, handle those issues. Uh, the second item was the, um, recommendation of town staff to create a, uh, page on the town website to consolidate, um, all of the information that was being exchanged with respect to traffic and safety. Uh, much of that concerning the Bartlett Street area. Uh, much of the communication that had been taking place had been communication through email with varying numbers and, uh, and, and people, uh, on those distributions, uh. Not always, uh, efficient for communicating the same information. If someone happened to be left off the list and followed up with the same kind of question. So that website page, uh, to consolidate, consolidate that information was the second element. And then as part of the recommendation, there was also the suggestion that longer term, uh, uh, consideration, um, of traffic and safety issues, uh, or at least recommendations about what the town should do to address issues relating to traffic and safety. Perhaps best ought to first come through the master plan implementation committee. So in the course of that discussion, we talked about town staff's recommendation. Uh, and at one point I called for a motion. Uh, for what the committee wished to do. John suggested that perhaps a formal motion wasn't necessary, that by consensus, the board could agree. Uh, we went through a period of discussion after that, um, and much of that focused on the town webpage and the utility of what that would provide. It seems that, uh, when we subsequently returned to the notion of consensus. Uh, there was different understanding of whether consensus was confined to the notion of the webpage or whether more broadly encompassed the entire recommendation, including the, uh, the recommendation that, uh, traffic concerns be first processed through the master plan implementation committee. So. So having, uh, laid all that out as background, uh, I believe Julianne, um, was concerned that the minutes as they were written didn't accurately reflect what, uh, was decided. Um, or at least what her understanding of, uh, was of what was decided. So. What I can say is, uh, in reviewing the entirety of the conversation. We had some discussion about it. When I called for the motion, I did refer generally to town staff's recommendation. So. I know that at least in my mind, it encompassed all of those elements. When we had the ensuing discussion and immediately, uh, when I called for consensus at that point. Um, at that point, we were talking specifically about the webpage and I believe I phrased it as consensus on the webpage. And then, uh, with the board having agreed to consensus on that, uh, uh, from that request. I I believed was the understanding we had just reached. Where I again referred to town staff handling, handling ongoing issues. Uh, creation of the webpage for central location of info. And master plan implementation committee taking the first cut at, uh, traffic and safety considerations. Um, when I made that summary following the agreement of consensus, there was not at that time any, uh, any uh, objection or point raised by any board member. That my summary did not reflect what we had just reached consensus on. So, uh, I think I would perhaps suggest that the minutes as written were, uh, captured the spirit of what had been agreed. Uh, but Julianne, if you, uh, have a proposal for how you would like to rephrase that portion of the January twenty-five minutes. Um, happy to entertain what you would like to, uh, suggest.
Well, um, um, I, I, I do understand how things got very confusing because we were talking about a little, two different things kind of simultaneously. But I, I can only speak for myself. When I voted for the consensus agreement, it was only for the traffic webpage. And, um, and I do remember actually when you summed it up and referred to, uh, you know, asking master plan implementation committee to take on traffic. I was surprised. We were three hours into the meeting and I didn't want to belabor the point because I thought that the, the vote would was covering what I, what I was sure I was voting on. Um, so I, I think technically the minutes have to be changed and the, that to reflect that the vote only was for the traffic webpage. And that's my opinion, but I, I firmly believe that that's what I voted for. So.
I, I think I would agree that to that point, at the point where, uh, we had some discussion and then I can't, I initially asked for a motion relative to the full recommendation. We had some discussion and then when we got to the point of asking for consensus, I believe I did phrase it narrowly. And refer only to the webpage. So I guess I am fine with a revision to the minutes. That at least accurately reflects, uh, that portion of the video. Uh, including my subsequent summary that, uh, that suggested it was, uh, somewhat more broad than that. Uh, so let's, perhaps we could dispose of this in one way or time. Uh, an amendment as Julianne suggests. That the literal description in the minutes states that I asked about consensus for, uh, the webpage only. And that was agreed. And then that I subsequently summarized. What I understood to be agreement as being more broad than that. That would be a suggestion for those minutes. Subsequent now, uh, as we're here talking about it. Um, I don't know what the understanding was, uh, was of the other board members. And if we have to review consensus or take a vote on consensus about what we want to do with respect to that recommendation. Uh, then I, I think we need to, to be clear about, uh, what our expectation is going forward. Because we can't be meeting after meeting after meeting, continuing to talk about a traffic and safety committee. If by and large, we're agreed that master plan implementation committee, uh, should be the first venue for that discussion. Uh, and not further, uh, frankly burden town staff with, uh, uh, continuing, uh, research or investigation or recommendations, uh, with respect to that. So. So let me ask board members, if you'd care to comment, um, I've proposed, uh, without actually having drafted the language, I've proposed a modification to the minutes. Uh, specific language, uh, um, I'm not sure if we need to get to that point, but I would certainly, uh, agree to a a change to the minutes to reflect that I asked for consensus about the webpage. And that agreement was given to that extent. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? I So my point, Leslie, is that, uh, if I look at what was literally said during the playback of the meeting. Uh, I, at, when I did ask for consensus at that point and people gave their agreement. I had specifically stated something to the effect that was, uh, focusing on the webpage information. For traffic and safety issues. So it's. I can understand if a member of the board in agreeing to consensus felt that it was confined to that specific point. So for the purposes of the minutes of that meeting, accurately reflecting what was stated. I have no objection to making that correction. Uh, Leslie, I had you first.
I, I disagree with that. I'm fine with the minutes as is.
Okay. Uh, Tim, you had a comment?
Um, if we change the minutes, does it change the vote?
If, if it changed, if we changed the minutes, I mean, there was no vote. It was a consensus of the board. Um, I, I. In my mind, I, I can, I can only say what was in my mind when we were having the discussion and agreeing to consensus. In my mind. We were talking about the entire recommendation from town staff and in agreeing to consensus, I was, uh, supporting all of those recommendations, the entirety of the proposal. If, uh, if someone didn't have that understanding for the purpose of consensus. Then I'm fine with that. We can correct the minutes to reflect what was literally said. Without trying to guess what was in the minds of everybody and without, uh, trying to make a declaration about, uh, anything broader having been accepted. But, uh, from that standpoint, I think we need to revisit what we agreed to and be clearer, uh, about the scope of what we expect. Uh, is the board's position with respect to town staff's recommendation? Yes, Tim?
Yeah, um, I when I was, when I was making my vote, I fully understood the scope of what we were voting on. Um, understood that it included both, um, the webpage and, um, the conversation around the master plan implementation committee. However, if you do go back and watch it and you want to take it verbatim, um, and not what was implied, but what was, um, you know, said verbatim, then I can see changing the note, the change in, changing the minutes.
Okay. Uh, Scott Rogers, any opinion?
Yeah, at, at the time that we were discussing it, uh, in my mind, you know, I was, I was treating all three aspects together. So, you know, when I nodded consensus, it was as far all the, uh, staff recommendations. Um, whether we modify the, the minutes to, uh, to reflect that we didn't all have that same understanding, then that it would be appropriate to make some modification, I guess, or, or that misunderstanding is going to be reflected in this meeting's minutes. So perhaps we don't have to make any changes at all to prior minutes and, and accept them as is.
Yeah. I, I, I think the, the suggestion I would make to clarify the prior minutes is simply to, uh, be more, uh, more verbatim about it as to what was said in, what I said in, at the, at the time I was asking about consensus. Which was more specifically, you know, directed about the town website page. Uh, and, and didn't specifically mention the master plan implementation committee aspect right at that time. So.
Would the easiest adjustment just? I'm sorry.
Uh, I was just going to say that, uh, uh, in our acceptance of the minutes. Um, we're trying to resolve exactly what those minutes should say. And I would agree that as initially written, the minutes don't quite precisely capture, uh, what was stated. Um, for that discussion. And what, what consensus might have been interpreted to be, um, by each of the board members. Based on the way it was actually phrased. So from that perspective, I would agree to a revision of those minutes to more specifically capture that portion of the meeting. Um, but if what, what it ends up doing is just leaving open the question about what the board has reached consensus on. So, um, arguably. If four of five members are of a mind that consensus, um, applies to the entirety of staff's recommendation, then here we are making that clarification and will be reflected here.
So.
Yes, Julianne?
For example, since it's, since I would like, since I would like the minutes corrected. Um, and actually I, I think to um, to be even clearer that the last sentence, which was your summary of the, you know, all of staff's recommendations that, you know, it was implied that that's what we voted on. I, I would like that struck from the minutes. So when we go to.
Well, 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 hold on. We're not going to strike it from the minutes because it was something I said. So if we're going to make a modification, we're going to modify the applicability of what I said.
But does the.
My, my suggestion, Julianne, is that, that I'll, I'll draft revised language for that portion of the January twenty-five minutes and we can review and, and approve it. Um, the, the problem we sort of face with right here is that we think we want to make a change to the minutes and we don't have any draft language in front of us to assess. So.
Okay.
Rather, rather than try and do that in real time here and wordsmith it, I suggest that, uh, I'll draft some language for it. Um, and, uh, uh, we can review that at our next meeting. And, and come to an agreement about exactly what those minutes should say.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you, Jason.
Yep, you're welcome. So, um, once again, we'll defer action on the January twenty-five minutes. And, uh, I will draft some language for a revision, uh, to that portion of the minutes about that discussion. Uh, and in the context of this discussion and the fact that there is a question about what the board's consensus is. And if we need to have a vote, I suppose we can take a vote to, to do that. The proposal, uh, from town staff included a recommendation with respect to master plan implementation committee. I'd like to ask if do we have a consensus or would you prefer a formal vote, Julianne?
Uh, what, what's the formal vote?
The formal vote would be, uh, that we are taking the position that the master plan implementation committee will be the venue for any further discussions about traffic and safety and will make recommendations about what actions to take. Uh, with respect to that, which may or may not include the formation of a separate committee.
I.
That's the proposal. I mean.
I, I.
The proposal, that's the consensus that we're looking to reach.
I, I prefer that we had a, a, um, you know, and a motion in front of us, knowing what we're voting on and that it actually be on the agenda for next meeting. That's.
Okay.
Preference.
We will then defer to March eighth, the, um, the revision to the minutes and the consideration of the specific recommendation from town staff to, uh, uh, to defer uh, action with respect to traffic and safety considerations to the master plan implementation committee. Okay. Uh, so. I hope this one will go quicker. Approval of February eighth, twenty twenty-one meeting minutes. Do I have a motion? I hope this one will go quicker. Approval of February eighth, twenty-twenty-one meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Mister Chairman, I hope that we approve the minutes of February eighth. Twenty-twenty-one Board of Selectment meeting.
Second.
We have a motion by Julian Hirsch and a second by Scott Rogers to approve the minutes of February eighth, twenty-twenty-one regular meeting as presented. This is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers.
I.
Julian Hirsch.
I.
Leslie Rutan.
Oh.
Tim Caitlin.
Hi.
And I vote I. Approval of February eight minutes carries unanimously. Which brings us to reports. We will begin with Scott Rogers.
Uh, great. So one item to report would be the meeting of the Financial Planning Committee. Uh, last week where the overall framework for the budget for capital improvements was reviewed. And the first, uh, set of projects within that from the police and fire departments. Uh, were reviewed in terms of, uh, the, the requests that are in and. For, for, um, implementation, uh, next year. Uh, next meeting will cover, uh, DPW and if there's any. Uh, school requests and so that, uh, that work will continue to establish the capital improvement projects for the next year. And that's all I had to report.
Thank you very much, Scott. Uh, Julian.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chairman. Um, so in the last two weeks, I attended Historic District Commission. Where that committee continues to research and provide information about historic sites of significance in town. I also attended Water and Sewer where the building project and dam project were discussed. And I attended the North Borough Cultural Council. The, um, the NCC is finishing up their grants, but they're also starting in very preliminary stages to talk about. Um, some public art, so as their. As their ideas be, um, become more concrete, I'll be reporting on that, um, down the road. And lastly, I'd just like to comment on the presentation made by the Central Massachusetts Regional Planning Committee to the Planning Board last week. Um, I'd like to thank the Planning Board for organizing this and inviting us to attend. And I, I personally, um, thought it was very well done. They kind of systematically identified some problems. Um, showed their research and, and some solutions and it was a, a very beneficial presentation, I thought. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Julian. Uh, Leslie.
Okay, um, I did notice driving through town today, um, actually every day I drive through town, um, that the holiday decorations are still up at the town common. So as much as I absolutely love holiday decorations, it does seem about time for some of those things to come down. And I don't know who was actually responsible for that, because I know it was a group of residents that put them up. But when you, there are things like, you know, evergreen vows and things like that, that are obviously not doing well anymore. Uh, so, uh, I don't know, Scott.
Uh, Scott, do you have a, uh? Response for that?
Yeah, uh, through the chair, I was, uh, contacted by a resident who coordinated that effort and, um. They indicated that they're planning on removing them. Uh, their hopes is after the little bit of a warm weather we have, the snow piles will be reduced. So the expectation is sometime next week you'll see the, um, the winter decorations be removed.
Okay. That, that would be great. That's good to know. I think it's about time. It's almost March. Um. Also, um, I wanted to ask Scott too, um, not to put you on the spot, but how's the, how is the traffic page working out? Right, as of now.
We, we're getting a lot of, uh, uh, requests that we, we typically get, um, posting them and providing responses. You know, as always, when, when we get a, a relatively simple question, it can often take the, the efforts of myself. Town engineer, uh, police chief, a matter of a week or plus, uh, to, to vet out the response and post it. Uh, but we're putting them up there and it's, it's actually serving a nice, nice resource in that. I can now point to prior, uh, responses to residents and say, you know, take a look, here it is. Now we have a portal for you to report through. Um, it's, it's gaining some traction and I, I, I think it's going to work out very well.
Yeah, thank you for all your work with that. I think it's a great idea because again, it gets us away from. A certain subset of people who may be on an email distribution list from seeing the answer. And this way, everybody can see it, they can access it, they can use it as reference. Um, it adds to the transparency that we, that we always wanted to be shooting for. So I think that's a great endeavor on our part. So thank you very much for being that, Scott.
You're welcome, Leslie.
That ends my report.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, Tim.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chair. Um, first, I just wanted to, um. I think that's absolutely wonderful. Um, I also want to thank, um. Thank you for considering all areas of town too. I think that's important and getting feedback from. From residents on where, where possible future sites could go. I think it's important that, um. You know, everybody gets, gets treated equally in, in all areas of town, get treated equally as we, as we go through these types of. Process and, and improvement. So, so thank you for that. Um. Had a, a diversity and inclusion meeting, um. Last week and we are working on putting together a diversity and inclusion survey. Um, that we're going to be sharing with the, the community, um, hopefully, uh, tomorrow or Wednesday. Um, so just be on the, the lookout for that. Um, it would just hopefully just be a link that people can share. Um, across social media and, and in other areas so that we can gather some, some information on. Um, diversity, diversity and inclusion in, in the, the community. Um, that would be, um, like I said, that should be going out, uh, tomorrow or Wednesday. Um, that ends my report. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. Uh, I just probably have a couple items to mention. One, uh, as Scott Rogers was, uh, looking in on the financial planning committee, uh. Uh, I'm ping ponging with him, looking in on appropriations committee who, uh. Was reviewing some of the, uh, public works, uh, um, items upcoming in the budget this year, so, uh. Yeah, DPW Director Scott Sharp is here to present all of that detailed information and, uh, excellent job, Scott, very clear, uh, very comprehensive, so. Uh, appreciate that. Um, those two committees, appropriations of financial planning will be ping ponging, uh, over the next couple of weeks, uh. In conducting their reviews of various aspects of the budget and the different departments, so, um. Uh, you know, as, as John has mentioned, we're kind of working, uh, from behind with respect to, uh, information from the state and. Appreciate the work of those committees and staff members to, uh, try and keep us on track and get that information processed in a timely fashion. So we can get to town meeting, uh, and do the right thing there. Uh, second, uh, we had a, uh, meeting of, uh, groundwater advisory committee last Thursday. Typically, we're just looking at applications, uh, uh, that might come before us, but, uh, there was a, a side discussion, not a side discussion, a scheduled discussion. Uh, at that meeting, um. Prior, prior to that meeting, there had been a couple of meetings, uh, in, uh. Is it, uh, January nineteenth and February second of the planning board. Planning board is revising, uh, proposing some revisions to certain bylaws, including one that pertains to groundwater, uh, special permit. Um, in the course of those discussions during the planning board meetings, there were some, uh. References made to the groundwater advisory committee, the process they, they go through, the scope of their review. And the understanding on both the part of the applicants and. The permit granting authorities, which are the planning board or zoning board of appeals. As to what the weight of that recommendation is, um, that comes from groundwater advisory, so. We had that discussion and, uh. Uh, Fred Litchfield, town engineer, explained that, uh, over the long history, um. Uh, the, the scope of what the groundwater advisory. Reviews has tended to focus on the technical aspects of a particular proposal. And not so much on the. Broader, uh, zoning aspects of it in terms of. Use or, uh, uh, allowed uses, prohibited uses, exceptions that might be made by the permit granting authorities. So the outcome of that discussion is that, uh. In formulating our recommendations, the groundwater advisory is going to be clear to the applicant about what the scope, uh, of their review is and what. And the fact that we're not granting approvals for anything, we are making recommendations to the permit granting authority. So be clear to the applicant, so the applicant doesn't have the misperception that the recommendation is. An approval itself. Secondly, uh, to be clear in communicating to those permit granting authorities. Uh, what the scope of the groundwater advisories review was, um. With the passage of time and transition of personnel on those boards, uh. You may have lost the understanding of, uh, how narrowly or how broadly, uh, broadly, uh. Groundwater advisories review is, uh, and so we'll be clear in our communications to those boards, uh. Uh, so that they understand, uh, uh, you know, ultimately, the, the review of these bylaws. Falls on those permit granting authorities, um, and they need to be clear about, uh. What the scope of groundwater advisories recommendation is, so. Uh, took a lot of time to say a small thing, but. Uh, that concludes my report. John?
No report this evening.
Okay.
Mister Chair.
Yes, Leslie.
Can I comment on something you said in your report? Is that appropriate?
If. If you have something you'd like to ask about or.
Not ask, it's a comment.
Go ahead, Leslie.
That I also watched the groundwater meeting, uh, or much of it anyway. And I do appreciate the comments that you made with regard to, uh, volunteers and the fact that. Uh, I think all board members need to be, boards on all boards need to be very careful how they speak about other. Volunteers on other boards, committees and commissions. Everybody's doing, uh, um, the best job that they can based on their own history and, and, uh, frame of reference. And it's important that we not speak ill or in negative terms of other volunteers in this community.
Okay, thank you, Leslie. This brings us to public comment, uh, as I've explained in the past, uh. People who wish to speak in public comment, if you're on the Zoom application, uh, don't see anybody connecting by phone, so, uh, you can raise your hand. Uh, through the Zoom app. Uh, I will bring you in one at a time. Please state your name and address to begin and you will have three minutes, uh, to speak. So I'll just going from top to bottom, uh, begin with, uh, John Wickstead. John, I'm bringing you in.
Hi, it's John Wickstead from Two Stirbrook Lane. Can you all hear me?
Yes, John, uh, please proceed.
I have a number of comments. First of all, uh, with regard to the most recent discussion on the Traffic and Safety Commission, I find it hard to believe. That the Board of Selectmen would abdicate their responsibility. On traffic and safety to the Master Plan Implementation Committee? I mean, there's a nice blurb on the town website that says in September of twenty-twenty. The Board of Selectmen, that's all five of you, established the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and there's a series. Of bullet points which describe the role of the Master Plan Implementation Committee, none of which. Has anything to do with traffic or safety. I mean, I interviewed for the Master Plan Implementation Committee and had a discussion with Tim and with Leslie regarding its purview. And actually, at one point, they asked me why I wanted to be involved, and I said, well, it would be a great place for citizens to turn to if they had. Particular concerns they wanted to see prioritized. Is in town and was told, you know, on certain terms that that was not the role of the Master Plan Implementation Committee. So it seems to me that you're now currently changing the role of committee that you already established last September. And that sounds kind of ridiculous to me. It also sounds ridiculous to me that you guys wouldn't be. Interested in listening to these issues yourself. And the tone I get from this is that you're tired of hearing about traffic and safety from the citizens. And that's really sad that the Board of Selectmen doesn't want to hear about traffic and safety. Listen, if you needed a self-serving reason to start up a traffic and safety committee. The Amazon issue is a great self-serving reason to do it. I mean, Mister Koder, God bless him, does not work for Amazon. If I had a problem at Wegmans, I certainly wouldn't call Mister Koder and tell him. That, you know, they're not honoring my two dollar Dunkin' Donuts dark roast coupon. You know, if I was buying a Ford from Westboro Ford, you know, I like to try and support our local businesses. And I had a problem with them, I would call up Jason Lanner down there at Westboro. Ford and he would sort it out. I wouldn't call Mister Koder and ask him to call Herb Chambers. And yet, when we're dealing with Amazon, I have no choice except to complain to town staff, and that's not Mister Koder's job. To be the liaison for Amazon to the citizens. That's totally ridiculous. And if you guys need a reason to have a traffic and safety committee. Well, establish a traffic and safety committee so that they can deal with Amazon directly. And not add extra work for town staff, but download. Work from staff. So that Mister Koder doesn't have to make an action item list for. Amazon, the traffic and safety committee can make. An action item list for the traffic problems we're getting out of the Amazon plant. I mean, that may be a self-serving reason for you to do it, but it's certainly a good one. Our town staff should not be. Tasked with being a liaison between the citizens and Amazon, which is exactly what the gentleman tonight. Said that should happen. I mean, what kind of business refuses to deal with us directly?
Uh, I'm sorry, your time is, uh, up. Is there anything you'd like to conclude with?
Yes, I'd like to conclude with one last point, and this is more of a question than a point, but. You brought it up in the meeting that as a, as a contingency of the planning board's original approval. That entrance and exit from the site had to be to the east. You know, at this point, based on our traffic cam data, the biggest problem we have is with trucks entering the site. You know, they're getting the message that exiting the site has to be a right-hand turn, and yes, we've got people particularly at night who ignore that and turn left anyway. But the majority of the traffic is actually coming from Route twenty down Bartlett Street to the facility. And if we're going to address this problem, then you need to have some signage at Bartlett Street. That points forward towards the facility and not. Allowing them to take a right-hand turn on Bartlett Street. I understand we can't. Tell them they can't do it, it's not against the law.
John, I'm. Not wanting to cut you off, but you're well, well over time. Yes, I'm sorry. Uh, I'm going to have to move on to the next person. Thank you. Uh, next up, I have Terry Underwood. Hello, Terry, could you please state your name and address?
Hi, yes, I'm Terry Underwood and I live at forty Maple Street. And, um. Uh, thank you for all of the input this evening and for inviting Amazon. All of that is really helpful. Um, I'm going to, uh, address traffic. Um, a repeated topic that I've had from the opposite end where. Route twenty and Main Street, uh, and Maple. So twenty, Main and Maple, so where, uh, everyone would know the Purple Rose and Central One Federal Credit Union. Um, thank you, Scott, for going after those grants. Um, I had asked in a previous meeting. And please correct me if I'm wrong, but. John, when I had asked about that particular intersection, it sounded like. Or I interpreted it that it was a, a done deal, that that intersection would get one of those flashing push button lights. Um, and I'm wondering if that is part of a separate. Grant, a separate action or something from what Scott has been doing. Um, and I ask this because I was reviewing a, a letter that, um. Oh, I hope this is old, but, um, I'm looking at it dated from February tenth. And it comes from the DOT. And it talks about that, that, that particular intersection through field observations, review of crash data. That installing of the RRFBs at look, at locations that marginally meet criteria could lead to overuse. Which would diminish effectiveness, and so they are looking at lines, striping. Colors, signage, and, uh, because a, a large part of my concern was where cars. Will pass other cars even being in that intersection and having had that happen personally. Um, and I know exactly all of the locations where the, um, other, uh, these. Uh, lights are going to be installed, that though the traffic absolutely flies through there as well. So I'm looking for support, clarification, assistance. Next step, how to move forward, and I'm wondering if anyone be, would be willing to comment.
Sure, uh, through the chair.
Sure.
So the town made the request, uh, to put a flash and beaking at that site, Mass DOT. Because it's a state highway that we don't control, Mass DOT controls it. They declined. We then appealed it. We contacted our legislative delegation. They all sent letters in or they sent one letter, all signing it in. All signing it asking for a, a further review, uh, reconsideration of that. Mass DOT, uh, did do that, a further review and reconsideration, and then they did come back still and decline, so. At this point in time, uh, i- it's not through a lack of attempt, uh, on the town's part. We were ready, willing and able to. Uh, to place a flash and beacon there, however, being a state highway. Um, it's, uh, requires their approval, which they, they have, um, they have declined to provide. And at this stage, I don't know, Scott, if you have anything to add, but there really isn't an avenue of appeal for us. Um, that's their, that's their reply.
We, um, you know, beyond the, 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 the written request for reconsideration. We had, uh, a few phone calls as well with them, kind of expressing, uh, the region, uh, around there, i.e. Uh, restaurants on the opposite side of Main. i.e., uh, restaurants on the opposite side of Main Street, uh, athletic facilities in Memorial Casey Field, and then the presence of an elementary school, uh, less than a thousand feet from the crossing. Um, expressed that verbally as well as in writing. Um, and like John indicated, that they, they responded after a full reevaluation, uh, in the negative and, and denied, um, authorizing that installation.
Is, is that full back and forth correspondence on the website, uh, yet, Scott?
Yes.
It, it is. So it's up there. You can see, uh, Terry, if you go on the town's, uh, uh, traffic website, you can see all the correspondence back and forth and where that stands. But unfortunately, it's a state-controlled highway and they have declined our request, uh, twice. So.
Is there anything that I can do, writing further, or is it a matter of waiting a certain block of time to improve that? I am very fearful that school, children, bus, dog walkers, or anyone else will, um, just looking at the town in total with all of the increased traffic, it's felt everywhere. And as someone mentioned previously, with trucks that are heading to 290, cut through, uh, Northborough and head west on 20, uh, I'm, I have serious concerns. So I want to make sure that everyone is aware. And, um, me living just a few houses down from that intersection, I love to go on walks and see a lot of people out there too. And I care deeply for all of my friends and neighbors and, um, I, I'm, there's gotta be something I can do and, um, I, I will keep pursuing it. So if anybody out there is listening and has some great ideas, I'm, I'm all ears.
Okay, thank you, Terry. Uh, next up, we have, uh, Carrie Martnik. Hello, Carrie.
Hello, um, this is Carrie Martnik, 16 Hemlock Drive. I just wanted to thank the board members who attended the CMRPC traffic presentation on the 16th. Uh, the planning board received a lot of emails and questions, including several emails actually from a few different board members. So there's a lot of input there and, uh, it was, it was, uh, nice to see that members had attended. Um, in kind, thanks for having the Amazon presentation this evening. That was enlightening. So just wanted to quickly comment on that. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, next up, I have, uh, I don't know if this is Henry Sizilka or Suzie, but, uh, I'm bringing you in.
Sorry, we had a stem Zoom, um, this afternoon, so I must not.
It happens, it happens, yes.
We studied precipitation, so shout out to Proctor PTO.
Right.
Suzie Sizilka, eight, yeah, Emerson Road. Um, first of all, Scott missed our, um, Community Affairs Committee meeting last week. So I just wanted to give a quick update on that because we're very excited. We're starting, um, a new event for March. We are going to try to boost the restaurants in town and have, um, some sort of contest, um, raffle for every meal or something that you purchase at one of the participating restaurants. So we're putting that together right now and we're very, very excited. So, um, hoping that you guys can share everything that we post on social media and get the word out. Um, cause we, we are worried about the businesses in town. So this will be, um, restaurants and we're going to come back to small businesses and shops later in the year. I just want to say thank you to Scott for bringing it, um, taking on the grant. That was, uh, wonderful news for me and for everyone in my neighborhood. Your public outreach and notice worked wonderfully. My phone was blowing up for 24 hours of people, um, you know, texting and calling and emailing about it. However, I just want to say, you know, I, I, I've been calling almost every meeting since July. And I actually made my friends, the Bartlet, the Bartlet, um, residents are all good friends now because they're calling in at the same time. And it just, there just doesn't seem to be a process. And I don't think a website is going to take the place of the, um, the need for people to voice their opinions on this, even in three minutes on traffic safety or issues that come up. And I really, I had mentioned in a talk to someone about the Master Plan Implementation Committee. And I, I was told, well, that has nothing to do with traffic safety. That's the master plan. And now we're putting it on the master plan. So I'm very confused. And to piggyback on what Jack said, I just don't understand, like, the master plan seems to be this all, all-knowing committee that doesn't even have a date to meet yet, that's going to take care of all of this stuff. And I really don't think we should burden that. But by saying that the Master Plan Implementation Committee is going to take over Traffic Safety Committee or decide on it, we're acknowledging the fact that we need something more than a website. And so I have, I haven't had the time to research. As I said, we're starting this new event for our community affairs. So we've been spending a lot of time on that. But I'm going to reach out to other town traffic safety committees and I'll report back to you all. Cause I did say I would volunteer my time for this. So, um, I, I just want to know how they work. I just think that we're acknowledging that something is needed and, and it, a website's not going to fulfill it all. Although I think the website's great, I think that the fact that people can go back, like John said, about the, the crosswalk that Terry had just spoken of, I think that that's great, that everyone can see what's happened so far, because you do get lost in all of these communications. As you know, I've emailed you probably 30,000 times. But, um, just keep an eye open for the, the notification from the Community Affairs Committee. Spread the word, let everybody that can enter is going to have to be a Northborough resident and Northborough restaurant. So, um, get ready to, if you have to exercise more to allow for the eating out more, do it. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Suzie. Uh, next up, I have Lisa Micali. Lisa?
Hello there, Lisa Micali, 13 Maple Street. Um, quite an interesting meeting tonight. Great job, guys. I want to mirror what Terry, um, Underwood had said about the crosswalk on Maple and 20. Um, disappointed that we got, uh, again turned down, um, but I think we're, probably the neighbors are probably not going to be as, uh, as easily deterred and will probably push forward further on that. But thanking Scott, uh, for the grant applications and going through the different sites for those RRFBs, I think they're great. Uh, and that's, it's very, uh, it's very comforting to know that we're starting to work towards safety here. My concern tonight, though, is that this Traffic Safety Committee, which was requested by the residents for several weeks, months, whatever, is being shuffled under the MPIC. And, um, and I don't think that it belongs there. I think it needs to stand on its own because we have an awful lot of issues with traffic safety. My street alone is going to come under a whole lot of issues with speeding and, uh, the amount of traffic once COVID is gone and the school is open and Amazon's in place and all the other trucking industries are in place. And right now, we have a speeding issue that's never gone away. So we're going to have to address stuff like that. So the other question is, is where's the charge? Uh, or the description of what the MPIC is actually supposed to do before we vote on having anything else under the MPIC? Um, I, I think that we're, we're putting a black hole in place and I don't think we should do that. So, um, thank you for letting me speak and, um, I'll end there.
Thank you, Lisa. Uh, next I have Janine Callahan. Hello, Janine.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
So, um, first I want to, um, say.
Could you just, uh, state your name and address, please?
Oh, sorry, Janine Callahan, Sixter Brook Lane.
Thank you.
Um, so first I want to say thank you for, um, inviting Amazon on tonight. It was helpful for the residents, um, in this area. But I want to kind of pick up where my neighbor, um, Jack Wickstead left off. When, uh, I understand that, you know, the signs are up for Amazon, requiring them to make a right out of their facility. Um, but we also have an issue, um, with them making a right onto Bartlett coming down, um, from the center of town. And I'm wondering if somebody can please reach out to them. Uh, maybe that can be added to their geo-fencing or whatever it is that they're, um, doing to keep the trucks from being on the roads that they're not supposed to be on. I, I hope that makes sense. I can put it in an email, um, but I'm hoping that you can ask them to, um, you know, m- make sure they're aware that it's not just trucks making a left out of the facility. It's the trucks that are coming back towards their facility from Route 20. They're still passing the high school. They're still speeding. Um, you know, it's 50/50, 50, 50% coming out of their facility and 50% coming back into their facility. So, yeah, the problem goes away, um, partially, but not fully. So if you can just ask them to look into that, um, I would really appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Janine. Um, on, on that point, I think we did have the discussion a little earlier, uh, with our, uh, with the Amazon representatives. And the statement was made that, uh, they have their own navigation application, which provides geo-fencing capabilities. But not all of the drivers, um, uh, are employees of Amazon and sometimes use other mechanisms, which don't provide the same geo-fencing protection that we expect Amazon's own application to have. So a learning curve there will, uh, to some extent be, uh, the number of drivers, uh, who use that application or whatever other means, uh, it's communicated to them and instilled in them that, uh, that, uh, that route is not an acceptable route for them to reach the Amazon site from the center of town, when approaching from the center of town. Uh, I have, um, one more person here. Uh, I'm going to guess that's Rick or Rachel Armstrong. Bringing you in.
Rachel Armstrong, Hemlock Drive. I also wanted to thank you for having, um, Amazon in. I, I thought it was really helpful and I thought that Mr. Kader did a great job of representing our concerns. So I'm, I really appreciate that. Um, a couple of things. My surprise, um, in the January 25th meeting was how many residents called in favor of some sort of traffic and safety committee, or at least investigating it, and how the board was ready to vote to move it to the Master Plan Implementation Committee. I sort of felt like you had every single resident call in, in favor of at least looking into it. So I was surprised how quickly most of you, with the exception of Julianne, were, were ready to move it to the MPIC. Um, and then the other concern that I have regarding Amazon is Lyman Street. That came up with the, um, Regional Planning Commission being an area of concern. And so as we start talking with Amazon and their GPS, um, and we have the over 55 community opening on Lyman Street. And I think a, a Westboro Amazon facility opening, I just want to make sure that the trucks are using 495 and not Lyman Street to get, uh, if they're going from Northborough to Westboro. And that was it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rachel. I'm not sure this is the proper time to talk about it because we don't typically engage in any kind of deliberation, uh, discussion. But I would say that, uh, I would say that the notion that the, the Board of Selectmen is deferring all traffic and safety issues to Master Plan Implementation Committee is not accurate. There's a separation of different concerns here. One are the immediate problems that are being reported and are going to town staff for handling. The other is the longer-term or broader, uh, and in, in a sense, more planned issues that, uh, the Master Plan Implementation Committee would, would, uh, take a look at, uh, which is part of the master plan and which does fall within the scope of the implementation committee to consider. I think that's the extent of what I'm going to say so that I don't stray into, uh, influential discussion here. But I just want to make clear that, uh, we're not punting all traffic and safety issues to Master Plan Implementation Committee, town staff, uh, particularly town staff, uh, with expertise in safety and traffic, uh, will be the ones to field those questions and concerns. And, uh, Master Plan Implementation can take the broader, longer-term look. That brings us to new business. Uh, discussion and approval of municipal joint comments to the Secretary of Energy and Environmental Affairs regarding the interim clean energy and climate plan for 2030. We have Becca Meekins, Assistant Town Administrator, who's been our leader in that, uh, effort. Becca, could you give us an update?
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I have a brief update for the board tonight. So, um, after our discussion at the last meeting, um, I did reach back out to, uh, from Madick and West, although the joint comments that you reviewed. Um, I did express the concerns that the board had with the MSBA net zero requirement starting in 2022. Uh, it turns out Northborough was not the only community that expressed a concern on that item. So the authors of the joint comments did agree to revise the comments. The revision to the comments now states, um, that the request will be to require MSBA projects be net zero ready by 2022. So this is a, this is an important distinction. Um, what it basically does is offer, um, municipalities, uh, the flexibility of designing their buildings to be prepared to go net zero in the future. Um, and realistically, um, if we're looking at 2050 as a goal for net zero emissions, the reality is that now, um, buildings will have to be designed with considerations uh, for becoming net zero by 2050. So, uh, we think it's a, a realistic edit. Um, it's an edit that we, uh, fully support. Um, and, uh, we do recommend that the board vote to support this revision, uh, to the joint comments. So I'm happy to answer any questions, but that's, that's it in a nutshell.
Thank you, Becca. Very, uh, appreciate the work you've done, uh, to coordinate with the other parties, uh, for this and, uh, bring our concerns to them and get some response. And, uh, uh, this seems to wrap it up kind of nicely for our purposes. Uh, any questions or comments from board members? Leslie?
Yeah, thank you, Becca. I, I think what stood out to me is that you had these discussions and to find out that other communities felt the same that we did. That's, that's always enlightening when you feel like you're the only one and is it going to be some separate commentary somewhere and we kind of stick out like a sore thumb because we're not, you know, in agreement with anyone else. So I think it, it was nice to see that other communities felt the same and that they would just go ahead and just revise the, the comment to include our thoughts. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Leslie. Uh, anyone else? And if there are no other comments, do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move the board vote to allow the chairperson to sign the joint comments on the CECP 2030 Plan as presented by Assistant Town Administrator, Becca Meekins.
Second.
Uh, moved by Julianne Hirsch, seconded by Scott Rogers. Any further discussion? Hearing none, this is a roll call vote. Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Leslie, you're ten. Tim Kalen.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, also vote aye. So it carries unanimously. Becca, thank you very much. Uh, it's been a long meeting for you to wait to make this presentation. Certainly appreciate it. And, uh, that brings us to review preliminary town meeting warrant summary. John?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, this is the time of year where we start to work on our, uh, Springtown meeting. And, uh, all warrant articles were due to my office last week. Uh, what we do then is we compile at least placeholders, uh, for where we are and we compile a summary list. Uh, now we will continue to develop these, uh, articles and bring them forward to you for your consideration at your next meeting. The, uh, process would be March 8th, the Board of Selectmen would close the warrant. At that point, it would go to town council for review. Then April 12th, the warrant would be posted. It has to be posted at least two weeks before, uh, town meeting. In terms of the, uh, draft that you have before you, and again, this is just a summary listing. Uh, some of these are a little more than placeholders. Particularly, we've got a bunch of zoning, uh, articles that we don't have any information on yet. Uh, but the planning board has indicated that they're working on, uh, some things. Uh, but if you look at this, uh, overall, it's a very reasonable, at least right now, um, warrant. It's a, uh, 40 articles plus reports. Uh, you have eight or nine financial articles that are standard every year, dealing with the schools and the general government budget. There are nine capital articles right now as placeholders. That's still being finalized. There are six, uh, CPA articles, uh, that are coming forward as they do every year. And then we have 10 zoning articles that, um, again, we're waiting to get some additional information on. Uh, there are two articles, um, that I. Uh, there are two articles, um, that I have included in here for, um, as a placeholder. Uh, right now, it's showing up. I, I hate to give article numbers, but because these are, are gonna shift around a little bit, but Article 23, uh, there was a request or some discussion about a compression brake bylaw. This is the truck Jake Brake, as often referred to. Uh, the police chief is looking into, uh, into that. Uh, we put a placeholder on here. That's something the board would like to, uh, pursue, if that makes sense. Uh, and the other is, we had, uh, what would have been a citizen's, uh, petition, but it, it came from, uh, the, um, uh, the Arsenalts, and that's, uh, the property tax exemption for Gold Star parents. Um, so I put that in as a placeholder. We'll give you, we'll, we'll put together more information and get that to you by your next meeting. But, uh, but otherwise, this is a, you know, it's a, a typical warrant. There are no major, uh, building projects on here. Um, again, I don't know, uh, what the zoning stuff, uh, consists of just yet, but, um, but we'll have a more blown-out draft of the articles themselves for you at your next meeting.
Very good. Thank you, John. Any, uh, I, this is the second time, well, not second time, uh, but, uh, having reviewed it in advance of this meeting, uh, as, as John says, a fairly typical layout for, for many of the warrant articles. Uh, anybody have any questions at this point? Hearing none. Uh, thank you, John, and we look forward to, uh, more detail at a future meeting. Uh, the next item on the agenda, uh, which is indicated as having been posted in error, is a duplicate of one we addressed at an earlier meeting. No need to deal with this. Uh, any other business to come before the board?
Nothing this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Chairman?
Les. I'm sorry, I had Leslie with a hand raised.
Oh.
I have a second. I have Leslie with the motion, Scott Rogers with the second. So roll call vote, Scott Rogers.
Aye.
Julianne Hirsch.
Aye.
Leslie Rutan.
Aye.
Tim Kalin.
Aye.
And I, Jason Perro, vote aye. Adjournment carries. Thank you all for your patience this evening and effort, and, uh, have a good night.
Good night, thanks.